Great, it is six o'clock. We will go ahead and get started. We are trying to hand some new microphones for the first time. So bear with us, we will try hard to speak into them so that everyone can hear us. All right, we will go ahead and start with tonight's pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item is tonight's consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Gary, thank you. That's our second. Second. Thank you. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Saying done, we can move to hold call votes. Trustee Gary.
Aye.
Trustee Hayden. And Mr. Cunha, second.
Right.
Motion carries. All right, the first item that we have on the administrative highlights for tonight is how the Hoopla daily limits work. Trustee Gary has decolled and brought this to board's attention regarding changes in the Hoopla terms and the resulting news about a reduction in monthly Hoopla checkouts. This caused some questions on the Christian County Library Facebook page. Tori, you had shared some more information with us on this matter with the board, and we're asked to help present that to us tonight to ensure that as many people as possible could hear that update. But I know it's on the website as well, so I will yield to you.
Great, okay, so I'll just give a little overview. I'll give a little overview, and then if you guys in particular have any questions that maybe you've heard that I don't cover. So the biggest question, of course, Hoopla, most everyone here hopefully knows what Hoopla is. It's one of our most popular digital resources. So you can get books, audiobooks, music. The heaviest use is for audiobooks, which are an expensive item, whether they're digital or not. But Hoopla has become very popular over the years. It's expensive, but it has the most kind of easily understandable user interface. And people can ask for almost anything they want and download it and kind of get it on demand rather than being put on a waitlist. But we paid for that. So the amount that was budgeted last year, and this was all planned, I think that was part of Mary's question, like, is this something that just happened? And it wasn't. So when Renee at that time made the budget, knowing how popular of a resource it is, the only way we can offer it is to put a limit on daily use and to put a limit on how many checkouts per patron people can get so that we don't go over budget. Because since it's on demand, if everybody just checked out everything they wanted to, we would quickly go over budget. So in the past, that limit has been five per patron per month. And so that means every patron has the ability during that month's period of time to check out five. We used to just kind of meter it by month, but then we weren't kind of distributing it as equally amongst everyone who wanted to use it. So we used to have a limit of, we had to kind of go back down to actually the original when we first instituted was three per month, because that way you have more people that can use it. So for example, let's just pretend that there are 100 downloads in a month. You know, that's not the case. If there are 100 downloads in the month and each patron can get five, that means 20 people, if they use all five of their things, can use the service, right? If we go down to three, that means 33 people can use the service. So you get more people using it with slightly less checkouts. So the plan was to keep the same amount in the budget, but to spend the first two months of the year finding a couple alternatives to add to the collection at a lower cost, to expand the digital collection and provide more options, and to spend those two months kind of trying our best to educate the public about the fact that the change was coming and to try and get them familiar with some of the new options. So again, we weren't taking it away, we were just trying to get more people to use it. And our plan has worked. It is a popular enough resource that once we started telling the public it was happening and it was reduced from five to three, people really missed it. And so they were upset and questioning whether this just happened overnight or there was some kind of reduction in the budget, and there wasn't. The budget is the same as it was planned and approved by the trustees in December. It's just that we wanted to make sure that more people had access to that. And I'm actually glad, Mary actually brought it up about a month and a half ago when there was some talk on social media about it. But I'm glad we waited until this month, which was just happenstance, because we wanted to see and are still looking to see whether our plan is working, and it is. So what happens with that daily limit is when you could only have five per patron and we had a daily spending limit of a couple hundred dollars, we would reach that limit earlier and earlier in the day. The limit resets, the system resets it at midnight. So at midnight every day, it wipes it clear, starts a new thing, and we just literally have a budget per month and five per day. And when we hit that mark, nobody else can check out for that day. So we were hitting that limit when it was five patrons, sometimes as early as 6:00 a.m. in the morning. So it would reset at midnight, people who really love Hoopla would stay up till midnight or get up and set an alarm early and check out their stuff really early. And so our hope was that by reducing it to three per patron instead of five, that it would give people a little bit more time to check out. So the super users could keep using, they can use a little bit less, but some of the people who weren't quite as avid users or didn't have the ability to stay up late could wait. And so usually by about 6:00, 6:00 to 9:00 a.m. with the old way, we would max out on the budget and we would start hitting blocks. And so we tracked, you know, we could track how many people were blocked. And there would be 30 to 50 people trying every day after 6:00 a.m. to get checkouts, and they couldn't. So in the last seven or eight days, all the blocks have slowly gone down. Now some days, we are going till 9:00 p.m. before we hit the limit. So people are sort of getting used to, I can't check out quite as many. It's allowing some more patrons to do. Last month, for the entire month of March, we had about 150 more unique patrons that were able to use it. So there's like about 1,000 people a month, individual people, not checkouts. So, and each person who uses it usually uses their whole three or five. So you had, we had about 1,000 people a month up till now, and now we're getting about like 1,150, so 150 more per month. And they're able to do it for a longer period of time because there's not quite such a frenzy. So, and in the last eight days, we only had one day where it didn't go the entire day, and only one block, one person was blocked. So we, I think it proved to be a successful change. We wish we could offer more. It is by far our most expensive part of the digital budget. Those of you who follow our stats in these monthly meetings know that our digital branches are actually, most months, our most visited branches. So if you combine all the different types of digital resources we offer, checkouts of those materials, mostly audiobooks, but audiobooks, regular picture books, films, TV shows, all of those checkouts are often higher than any individual branch. So after that, it's usually NIXA, Ozark, but it's a very, very used resource. We also, so in terms of the plan of rolling it out, I think we did the best we could. Again, we thought about it, and the first two months, it went kind of like this. So the first month, we started training staff so that they knew that it was coming. So we talked to them about the fact that the change was coming, tried to explain kind of how these limits worked for patrons that came to them with questions about, you know, I used to get five, why can I only get three? So kind of training them to be able to talk on the front line to people who are confused about what's going on. We did also, Renee worked at the end of last year to add a digital resource called Blackstone Audio, which I'll be thrilled if you read any of our many notices trying to get patrons to know about it. The subscription service there is not per item, so you don't pay per download. You pay an annual fee for all those audiobooks that they have, and they have exclusively audiobooks. But audiobooks is the biggest number one item checked out on Hoopla. So it doesn't have as many audiobooks as Hoopla, but everything they publish, all the audiobooks they publish, anybody can check up an unlimited amount through them. So we got that up and running on the backend, put it on the website so people could access it, and then tried to get staff to start telling people who came in looking for digital materials about that. And then in February, we started sending out alerts on social media. We put a little banner on the website explaining it. I think it's still up there on the slider of the website that just says, there are some changes to Hoopla. Click here, there's an FAQ page with a lot of this kind of detailed information. So we put it in our e-news letter, et cetera. So I think we've done our best, but this is actually exactly what the administrative minute was kind of designed to do in these meetings, because this is another venue, you know, to kind of get the word out and make sure that people know that it wasn't accidental and it's not supposed to be punitive to people who use it. It's really a way to spread this really popular resource around.
That is excellent, yeah. And how is usage looking like now on Blackstone? Have you seen a significant?
You know, I didn't really look into that, but people are starting to use it more. I mean, I think the truth is, it's never going to be a replacement for Hoopla because Hoopla is just so convenient. I mean, the other main digital platform that we use is Libby or Overdrive, and that's a fantastic platform, but often there are waitlists for those books, just like you might have for books on the shelf. And the thing that people love about Hoopla is they just get it constantly, and we have such kind of an instant-driven culture. It's a real luxury to have that. And I mean, it is a really important resource to have in some measure for homeschool families, for example, because occasionally you do have a book that maybe, maybe Blackstone doesn't publish that book and you need that book, or maybe Libby has it, but it has 10 folds and you need it this semester for what you're teaching. Like, it really is nice to have the option. I think we just try our best to get patrons and the public to understand that it's a limited resource, so it's not the kind of thing to kind of think through if you're going to use it strategically in, you know, in homeschool or just for fun. And I mean, maybe if you don't have a curriculum you need to use it for, you can check out all three of yours right at the beginning of the month and just enjoy that. But, you know, you might want to save it for a weekend when you have a vacation at home and know that you want to use it that weekend, so you can get it when you want it and not have to wait for it, or if you're on a trip, so.
Great.
Any other details that you guys?
Sounds wonderful.
Yeah. So in the future, in future budgets, that's always something to look at. But I do think it's a resource that patrons want and love. And I mean, we're hopeful over time that we can find ways to grow that budget, so. Back in my other job as the person who takes money from people, people never want to donate to digital resources because they're spent right away, but it's real popular, so. Do you know anybody who wants to give kind of annual donations to pay for digital resources? Because we all use books everywhere now. I mean, you know, you might be listening to an audiobook. It used to be just, you would check it out and wait for a time to read at home, but now you're not just even driving, you're driving, you're exercising, you're walking. Like, you are just doing all the things and using library resources. So it is one way to make sure you're able to do that all the time.
And I think this might be a good time to start looking at crunchy numbers and seeing what that is to get the word out, because it is a resource that is highly valued. And I was, you know, like I said, I saw the chatter on the Facebook when that announcement was made. I mean, it obviously is something that the community wants. And so, I mean, we can, if we can get that information out, maybe it will encourage, you know, potential donors to come out and support them.
Yeah, and I remember a time when no one even knew what Hoopla was, like, we were really pushing it. I remember, I think, I don't know if it was, I think it was Nicholas when he first came on. We had little bookmarks, and we still have them that talk about Hoopla and how to use it. We used to kind of tell people about the exciting new resource and try to. So now we're not hiding that information, but, you know, it definitely is so popular that we don't have to tell people anymore. To be, to be honest, actually, the history of going to five was a COVID-related grant issue. So we started the service at three, that's kind of where I started, because that's where my brain is at when I'm in these meetings, beginning, I'm used to being in this seat. But we started at three, and that was all we were able to afford initially. But during COVID, there were a bunch of pots of federal grant money for digital materials since people had to stay at home. And so we were able to get a couple large grants to increase that number to five that specifically paid the increase to five for patrons who wanted to use it. And that money lasted a number of years, but that money has for sure run out, and we tried to supplement it in the budget, but by then, everyone was using it. And so it, you know, it just, the demand had exploded.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up. Anything like that, it's a fantastic thing for people to know more about, so.
Yeah.
Any other discussion, questions on that one? All right, if not, we will move ahead into our public comment period. Looks like we've got five speakers tonight. We do have 60 minutes set aside, but we won't run into that. I think everyone that wants to participate in this process and is signed up to speak, I also would ask that our audience members please be respectful of our speakers and allow them that three minutes to speak uninterrupted. Appreciate everyone's cooperation. Do you have anything you'd like to turn in? If you're one of our speakers tonight would like to turn something in to the board, a handout, then I would welcome you to come do that at this time. Otherwise, I will call our first speaker as well as our second speaker so that you know when you are up to speak. So David Rice, thank you, you are first up to speak. And Juanita, break, you are our second speaker this evening.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight to express concerns about transparency and accountability at our library. A recent Sunshine Records request revealed concerning information about how library statistics are reported to the public and how certain relationships with media are managed. First, regarding financial reporting. Internal emails show the library's average patron value calculator, which claims each patron receives $896 to $900 in value annually, was not based on actual patron usage data. Communications between staff indicate these figures were developed primarily for promotional purposes rather than reflecting real patron behavior. One email even acknowledged, I don't have a good average for that yet, although if I had a guess, I would say around $40 a year. The stark contrast was being publicly promoted. Second, the library's annual reports show concerning statistical trends. While digital collection size increased by 34% between 2023 and 2024, circulation only increased by 10%. This suggests taxpayers funded a significant expansion that wasn't matched by actual usage. Additionally, visitor increases were presented without context of public recovery or population growth, potentially giving a misleading impression of service expansion. Third, concerning media relationships. Documents show that your director of communications provides immediate preferential responses to certain journalists, while citizens seeking the same public information must file formal requests, wait weeks, and pay fees. For example, when a newsletter reporter requested information about the executive director's resignation and salary, she received detailed information the same day. Meanwhile, citizens requesting similar public information face institutional barriers and costs. These patterns raise important questions about whether this library prioritizes marketing or transparency, whether public resources are being allocated effectively. As a taxpayer, I ask this board to consider, one, requiring data reporting based on actual usage rather than marketing goals; two, ensuring equal access to public information regardless of who makes a request; three, publishing your methodology for financial metrics so taxpayers can understand how value plans are calculated. Our library provides important services, but accountability to taxpayers must be paramount. I welcome the opportunity to discuss these concerns further. Thank you for your time.
Again, I have a question.
How was the information to the newsletter reporter provided? Was it requested via email, was this a telephone conversation?
It looks like it was an email, so it was not a formal Sunshine request. So Martin Mays requested just a very informal conversation with Nick Halliday.
Thank you. Juanita, you are the next speaker up, and Kevin, you are after.
I'm very hopeful about the future outlook for the Christian County Public Library. The Financial Subcommittee is now going through itemizing, identifying a common sense long-term sustainable plan to streamline and make efficient the library's use of $4 million of Christian County citizens' tax dollars. The Bylaws Subcommittee is now going through the library's bylaws with the same purpose, making changes and adjustments to return the library's culture and mission to the people of Christian County's values. I believe that balance, both financial and cultural, will return in our library in the very near future. Depressed present frivolous lawfare that has been launched against three of our Common Sense Board members over the last few months is the same evil scheming attempts to maintain control that we see on both the large and a small scale all across the nation. If you don't have the will of the people and enough elected officials to swing things your way, then the only hope that you will have is to wage lawfare and medialize on the majority in hopes of wearing good people down mentally, emotionally, and financially. But in Jesus's name, I believe that those tactics will fail. And I just have to conclude with this. The constant name-calling, names like Christian nationalists and fascists, have really gotten old. They also rang pretty hollow and hypocritical last month when a former Christian County Library Board trustee attended the Commissioners Town Hall meeting in Ozark. And I remember this lady. On my very first board meeting, after several of us spoke about the age and appropriate materials placed in the children's sections, this lady lectured us about being more tolerant and inclusive. And just like the other trustees, who at that time were mostly gone now, she didn't feel what they said, we were immediately dismissed. When she showed up at the Commissioners Meeting in Ozark last month, she showed her colors once again. She began the evening by refusing to stand and recognize the pledge of allegiance. In fact, she was seated with her back to the flag, looking at her phone. Now, there appear to be others here tonight who feel that same way, and that's your, that's your right. But I personally, I want to respect those who have fought and died for the freedom of dissent that that flag represents. That took her. As the evening progressed, at one point, she engaged in an argument and back and forth with one of the Commissioners about the sexually explicit books in the children's section. When he commented to her that he had seen the books and he was disturbed by them, she immediately shot back again with, oh, were you excited by them? Folks, this attitude is what we have faced over and over for the last two years. I can't tell you how thankful I am that Echo, Diana, John, and Mary have bravely stepped up to bring Christian County values and sanity back to Christian County Library again. From all the moms, dads, grandmas, and grandpas that have been involved in this nothing less than a battle for the last two years. Thank you.
Kevin, you are up, and Sharon Harmon, you are next.
I too, very excited and hopeful. I see a lot of good things going on. I hope we can start working together with everybody. I've got a hero, an author. I don't read a lot of books, but one book I do read lots, the Bible. The other one is people that write about the Bible. Billy Graham, he wrote a lot of things. He spoke a lot of things, and he was a man that sought peace. I just want to read a little bit about what he said in 1959. Things don't change a whole lot, you know it. But he said, "The Bible says that the hope of His coming should cause us to watch. Watch therefore, for you know not what hour the Lord hath come." The Bible indicates that for us to know Him, it should purify us. It should make us united as Christians. It should cause us to evangelize. Jesus said, "Occupy till I come. Occupy with loving your neighbor. Occupy, don't sit down and say the Lord's coming." We should never say, "I'm just going to wait till Jesus comes back." You know what? He put us here for a purpose, and we're here to influence and to make the world a better place for our children, mostly. This is the world they're going to be living in. No, that's sin to God to not do something. So my personal beliefs are, I have to go ahead and step up and say and do certain things. I'm not here to cause problems, I'm not here to harm anybody. I'm here to just helpfully figure out how we can get together and set things fair. Billy Graham said, "Go back to your school, go back to your home, go back to your church, go back to your social obligations, work as you have never worked, occupy till I come. Go down among the people, help the poor, love your neighbor, give food for the hungry, get involved in the world in which we are living. It's a light and shining testimony for Christ. We are the salt of the earth, we are the light of the world. Live for Him and His burning hope within you. That should never make you live more intensely. That should make you live more intensely for Him than ever before, with far deeper commitment than ever before. To those who say, 'Keep your religion to yourself and stay quiet,' I have to say, I can't do that. As a Christian, I have been given a mission to occupy till Jesus comes back and set things everybody, everything back in order, and He will do that someday." Thank you, Echo. Thank you, Diane. Thank you, John. And thank you, board, and to the staff. And Mary, you know what? Y'all are doing a lot of things. You're giving up so much of your personal time, and we appreciate that. I just hope that eventually, we're going to get all together and we're going to have a safe place where everybody can go. We can be in the same building, be in the same room, and we can go ahead and look to the future for our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sharon Harmon.
Hello. I would have you know that I'm Sharon Harmon, a resident of this county and an active library patron, and a very lucky digital library patron, so I appreciate that a lot. I'm also a devout Christian, although I don't think I have to wear a label to speak, but apparently we're dividing things up, so I just wanted to point that out. I'm a retired school librarian, I served 20 years in the Ozark Junior High. If you've never worked in a junior high school, they are creatures unto themselves. My greatest concern is for the board right now, right now. And are you listening, really listening to all the patrons in this county? A case in point, the ALA and MLA discussions and the discussions that want to wrap that. Now, the decisions have been made. Sheila Michaels shared the role that she's served in these offices and these organizations and would answer any questions the board might have. The board had no questions for her and later voted to disassociate with the American Library Association, with the Missouri Library Association, that they weren't members of. So it didn't make a lot of sense to me. I assume there were no follow-up questions of Ms. Michaels because the decisions had been made. The hiring of a new director is another concern I have. Renee Brummett resigned in December. The current director, Dana Roberts, was appointed and stepped out of the position in March. Tori Payton was now serving in that position, but I have to wonder for how long. The discussion on lowering the requirements for an executive director yet paying was confusing to me to understand. Why would the board consider not hiring the most qualified, educated, experienced person for this position? Library positions are far different than business positions. And so I don't think a business person is exactly the person that understands all the ins and outs of librarianship. The nuances of public librarianship are covered in degrees of a master degree in library science. This is an ever-changing technical world, information versus truth versus non-truth world. It's, high library experience and qualifications need to be considered. Book labeling is another concern. We do not want to stigmatize kids, we do not want to stigmatize parents. We have LGBTQ parents and kids who are equally entitled to materials in this library about being stigmatized. Please, Lord, pause, take a minute, listen. Consider all the needs of this county, and the needs are many, because we are varied, we are all represented, no matter our religious or non-religious beliefs. And we have to, they all have to be, thank you.
Can you get me with my face mask on?
A little closer.
I apologize, I'm extremely sick, although I tested naked for everything today, so it's probably just a cold. Tonight, I endeavor to do a few things that are very new to me. For the first time in my life, I did not stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I have obviously been writing while I'm supposed to be listening to other speakers. Both of my grandfather's father and his second mother were, they spent their weekends on the Jersey Shore. They met my grandmother's in the New York side. My life is a perpetual song. One had a ship torpedoed and it was sunk. The other never met his son until after his son, my father, was three. I thought hard about my respect for them, for the flags atop my mantle, and for my son. So since he's the only one who's still around, I messaged my son. I'm not allowed to talk to him on the phone, but I allowed to message him on Facebook for some reason. And I asked his permission. I said, "Son, I know you're on boat in the middle of the Mediterranean. Tell me your thoughts on this, if I don't stand for the Pledge of Allegiance for the first time in my life." And he said, "Mom, I want you to remember that I'm not doing this, or that I am doing this specifically, so you have a way not to stand during the pledge when you don't agree." My family takes this seriously. My husband said he would stand by the phone for a call and with bail money. My husband said he would stand by the phone for a call and with bail money, and I laughed because that's ridiculous. And he looked at me and he said, "Honey, you were raised in absolute freedom in so many ways, and I don't feel as confident as you do anymore." This is something that frightens me because my husband, to say that he's not interested in politics or being active is sort of an understatement. He tells me to go out and do that. So the reason why I'm telling you this tonight is because I noticed that labeling is on the agenda again. And on behalf of the Right to Read Coalition, which is a statewide organization of nonprofits that support public education and libraries in the free and free, I just want to say the following. If by labeling, you mean to identify anyone who has taken out books with a specific ideology or not, to identify certain groups, marginalize or not, to make others labeled and identified as part of or outside of a specific word by as that you see artists will reconsider. My name was on a federal list when I was in college because I visited certain bookstores that were considered communist bookstores in the early 1990s. This was not something I feared, because I was in college, we were taught to research, we were taught to learn, and we were using it for debate tournaments. If somebody labels me as a communist because they see me leave a certain bookstore, or labels me as someone not in their ideology because of a book that I take out, that immediately marginalizes me, and it marginalizes people who are not in those groups. And all of a sudden, we're labeling and defining for other people who we think they are.
Thank you. All right. So we will move now to the old business portion of the agenda on the screen here. We've got resource sharing software updates. I was worried I would leave before, there's updates on that.
Yeah, it's brief, but good. Testing has begun. We have a small kind of internal testing group that we're trying to replicate all the ways in which people use our research sharing material, and we are really hopeful that Mobius will be up, you know, within a month or so. Certainly, we don't have to pay again or even look at a contract till June, so we're hopeful it'll be before then. So it's just been a slow process. We don't control what they're doing, as they're kind of rebuilding their own system so that it's not dependent on other software, and it should allow more libraries to join, which is great. So stay tuned, it's exciting. Certainly, our communications department will let public know as soon as we are able, and it should look a lot like it did before, be about the same process to use it, so there shouldn't be much education in terms of how to use it. It'll just be up and running, and hopefully not too glitchy, because we're trying to get out the glitches now, so we shall see.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Tori. The next item on our old business is an update on our RFQ for the representation of the district in ongoing litigation. The link to the RFQ for anyone that was unaware is now located under the Library Careers page under a special RFQ section, so thank you to our web team for helping accommodate that. The reason we needed to move it is so that the Missouri Bar Association can use that link to then help post it, so as a four seven, that is now posted as well on the Missouri Bar website under their contracts. So appreciate the team's efforts to get that posted. Any questions on that? All right, the next item on our agenda then is the policy and bylaws subcommittee progress report, so remember that subcommittee, this is for writing updates.
Can you hear me?
I think you can.
So we had our first kickoff meeting, we went through the first 40 pages. Unfortunately, Diana's not here today. We also shared our changes and scope with Robert Petrowski. He made his first pass, and he had a few small comments, those have been incorporated, so we'll review them again with staff before we bring them back to the board. We have not done bylaws yet, we haven't touched them. So we've already made some changes to bylaws, so some of the things we wanted to do are already done. With regard to the budget subcommittee, we had our kickoff meeting, we set some scope items, requested some information. Unfortunately, we haven't had availability of Mary Miller, so we deferred that first week of May.
We can send a date if you want tonight. We did have the date, but you wanted to do interviews that day, so it was just postponed. We don't have, so I would love to send a date, that would be helpful.
Okay, you could email it, and we'll figure out, because I've gotta have.
And you asked for a list of vendors for that, that would be next, about this Friday, this Friday, so they did work on that, so I'll just email that to the trustee, to everybody so they have it.
Okay. So those are the two updates. We are heads down on ED selection, the executive director position right now, so we postponed what would have been our weekly meetings, we postponed those, so we'll pick it up again once we get past the first round. I think things will lighten up a little bit after that. That's all I have for those.
Do you want to try and send a date tonight, or just wait till after the first ED stuff and send it then?
Yep, let's do that.
And then the Robert comments, are those, did he just send those to you, or are those in a folder somewhere? I haven't seen that.
We're actually right on the draft document.
Oh, okay.
If you look in the margin, they're there.
He did it on that, okay, I'll check it out. Thanks.
Thank you, John, and subcommittee, I know that's taking a lot of time in addition to regular work as well as executive director hiring, so I do thank the board and the staff that are involved for their time and efforts in those places. All right, so the next item on old business is, really old business, it's from October, so we're revisiting the October 2020, October 22nd, 2024 Board of Decision to Provide Copies of Legal Memos Prepared by Library Counsel to Public Record in Board Practice. The title would indicate this was a matter that was brought up in October, which I see Gary had brought this forward as a motion at that meeting. A new attorney now representing Christian County Library and our legal counsel. This matter was requested by our counsel to be revisited, that legal memos should be treated as privileges unless otherwise, which I may be prepared in a public facing format inappropriate, so I have this board is committed to transparency, so John, I would yield to the board if you wanted to revisit this item.
Yeah, I don't think there's any change in this. When we first talked about this, there was no lawsuit, and our current attorney, Robert Petrowski, felt like it's better if he reviewed, so the sunshine requests were for any emails to or from Robert Petrowski. He wants to be able to review them to make sure that they are truly not attorney-client privileged. So he'll review them, he'll release them to you, Tori, if they're appropriate to release, and that's really the way he wants to do it. He's our attorney, so we're gonna follow his counsel.
So this is not about emails, though? This is about the memos that you, you have voted to make all of Harry's memos and library legal counsel memos public?
Right, someone had the idea, we were gonna expand it to everything, and I think that's what the intent was.
I think even on the memos, what Petrowski is asking for, revision of this.
So the email, our procedure has always been, we get requests for email in between the attorney and anyone, that we send it to the, we pull those and we send them to the attorney and then ask the attorney if it should be privileged or not, since it's their emails. But this is not about that at all, this is just about memos?
Legal memos is what it says, if you look at the minutes from the October meeting, the second session, yeah, because I think it's important to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and that, that is the specific guidance that we're receiving from our attorneys that don't necessarily have to be made public.
Well, I have a, I have a couple issues with this. The context shouldn't have mattered. John moved that all legal memos were provided, that will provide with a legal trust piece or legal advice with the exception concerning pending litigation. So nothing about the litigation, but just about library issues will be made available to the public as part of the board's next regularly posted meeting packet. Also, David Rice and I brought up the issue of transparency. Juanita brought up the issue of transparency. This is a continuing theme that, in the comment section. I feel, I feel y'all have not been transparent with me. I hear you make a comment, I talked to Robert about this. I hear Echo make a comment, "Oh, I talked to Robert, he said this should be a closed meeting." I've never been informed that you guys are going to talk to Robert. Talking to Robert should be an issue as the board, not for personal inquiries or things. They should pass and be shared with the board, and then give it to Robert. I agree, there may be a few exceptions, but it seems he's turning it into just an answer for almost everything, and it's showing in our bills. And it concerns me very much that I have not been included in the transparency, and I feel the public does have a right to the transparency. I understand Robert wanting to preserve quite, you know, privileged information, but so much of our conversations with him have nothing to do with public information. Echo had asked him to do an entire write-up on labeling and law cases and everything. The previous lawyer had already offered us the exact same information, nothing new came out of it, and yet we spent many hundreds of dollars paying for this new packet. So I'm very concerned about our cost, I'm very concerned that we talk to each other as a board and make decisions on this, and with respect to attorney-client privilege, so much of what we ask him isn't privileged information, and it needs to be accessible to everyone, and I need to be included.
You have been included, and so the only thing.
John, after the fact, at a meeting, you said we can put, we can put it, you said, "I talked to Robert Petrowski." Echo said at a meeting, "I talked to Robert Petrowski." It's a fact, it's on video, it's been documented. There are many times you have reached out to him without consulting us.
I have two subcommittees. I use Robert as a consultant for both of the product on those subcommittees, okay? So I do talk to him, independent of you. I cannot include you in that, we would have a quorum. I'm sorry, Janice, but you didn't want to be on those subcommittees.
I understand that point, though at times I'm referring to were in months previous to the subcommittees about other issues.
The only other thing I'm aware of is there was an email from Echo to Robert, and she's entitled as the president to seek advice. So that's the only other thing I'm asked, that I'm aware of. And I did see an email that was about the sunshine request, and Robert wants to be the one to decide if something's released. He's our attorney, I'm not gonna argue with you about that.
I don't know what you're talking, I don't, I mean, I don't know which one you're talking about, so there's lots of sunshine-related things, but I don't.
No, this is, this is in general. Our current attorney wants to decide if something is sunshineable or not. He wants to do that. Right?
With respect to his communications?
Yes.
And it really is. We are, we are all topic, I think.
No, we're not.
So we could talk about sunshineable things, but that's a, that's a different issue. So the board can decide how they communicate with the attorney, and they should do that with the attorney, right? And so it, you know, one way that you could operate is to have a meeting and decide whether, make a vote as to whether something gets taken to him for a question or not. I was instructed, so in, with our previous attorney, and when Renee was here, if there were library-related questions, because he's the attorney for the board and the library, which are all one kind of entity, but if there were library-related questions, Renee would usually talk to the attorney on her own, and then if it was an issue that required board action, bring it to the board. And you guys did not officially vote, but instructed her to change that, so that now it would be whoever is in the director's seat CCing the president, so that the board is informed at all times about what the library staff are talking to the attorney about, right? And to ask the attorney questions. So sometimes I do do that, that's not new. In terms of the board communicating directly with the attorney, I mean, that can go both ways. Sometimes it could be one person, like the president, but usually, I don't know. I mean, certainly Janice's request could be something you guys decide to do, where you, you just take a vote to say, you know, "We make a motion that John be able to contact the attorney during the subcommittee." I mean, just to be, it's just.
He's already listed as one of the contributing members of the subcommittee. We already said that, he's right in the.
He's not listed as a subcommittee member, but.
No, but he is a consulting member.
He's a consultant for the board.
Right, he's consulting member of the subcommittee.
I don't think you're going against anything that's been decided. What I heard Janice asking for was maybe a way to make sure that when board issues are taken to the attorney, that everyone is informed that at least that issue is being brought to mind.
My concern is the previous lawyer, you just ignored whether there was anything he felt was sunshineable or not sunshineable, or whether it was. You just said, "All legal memos prepared by library counsel to provide trustees with legal advice will be made available to the public."
Except for pending litigation.
Except for pending litigation.
Right.
That's one thing.
We're on pending litigation.
Well, no, right, but he has prepared amendments, so the new attorney was advised that you passed this when you hired him, and he has prepared a memo since, which has not been released to the public. So if this is not changed tonight, that needs to be released to the public, along with any others that maybe I don't know how.
And one other issue is Robert Petrowski has nothing to do with pending litigation. That is not a, the lawyer employed by the library has nothing to do with pending litigation.
That's true, he has refused himself.
I think Robert would have to decide that. I think you're trying to say his role.
He refused himself. To all of us, he told us he refused himself.
From all, from all attorney-client privilege?
From pending litigation, he refused himself. There should be no conversation with him about pending litigation, nothing. That should be handled through your private, personal attorneys.
So, John, I think if you, if the board wants to change this, they just need to change it back. I think what Echo was saying is that your new attorney does not, wants to retain client privilege even for legal memos, with just something that.
You guys asked on.
And last time, you guys didn't ask Harry, you just did it, and you know, Harry had to make his public, and that's okay, but if you want to change it back now, then he can have client privilege, but right now, he doesn't if it's a legal memo that's not about pending litigation. So that's.
I think this is gonna be very valuable when we get to labeling library materials, because that's really what we release, and that's what we want to get to, so we'll get to that.
Well, I think the question, yeah, I think Echo's question is, is the board going to change this, or is every legal memo that he gives you that's not about pending litigation, which as Janice points out, at this point can't be unless there's new litigation, the litigation that's ongoing, he's refused himself from, so he's not gonna be writing legal memos about that. So it would have to be.
So Robert has asked us to review this for reconsideration tonight, that's why it's on the agenda, so.
Another motion.
Yeah, so, Mary, do you have your hand raised?
Thank you.
Sorry, I moved on, we passed, so, yeah, I think we do need to take action tonight.
When was this discussed with Robert, that he requested this information?
So actually, I will say, in that very first meeting, Renee brought it to his attention that this was passed before she left, that was the first meeting that you guys had with him when you got to know him. And she just said, "Heads up, this is here," and he had kind of forgotten about it. I sent an email to him reminding him that it's there, and if he had prepared legal memos, they would be subject to it, and I guess then he reached out.
How did he reach out?
He emailed, I think Tori and I, there was an email chain with Tori and Robert and I about it. I have to reference the email to.
I would think that would have been an email that should have included the entire board.
Okay, well, if it included the entire board, we would have had to call a meeting. So I think that that's, I think what he said was, "Bring it for discussion and discuss it now," so that's what I think.
That's why it's on.
Yeah, so it wasn't, it wasn't decided, it was just, it was just him saying, "Bring it to a meeting, I would like it to be known that I would prefer not to have my legal memo." He did actually say, if I remember Echo, that he wouldn't mind preparing things for the public, but that he would prepare them differently, that he would.
Yeah, and so I think that's the commitment to transparency that remains, is that Robert, if we task him for something to help research for the board's purposes, we can review that together, and if, and when it's appropriate for public release, you can absolutely ask him to please draft a public-facing version of that document.
So he did not think this should be a closed meeting issue, for example, he wanted it to be discussed, since it was something that was, it was an initiative that came from the board initially. It was John's idea to make things more transparent and let people know what Harry was telling them, that Harry did consider privileged. So now you would just be, it would be a reversal if you change it, but it is what your attorney wants.
And it also means a lot more cost, and a lot more involvement with the lawyer, and a lot more cost within something that.
So now you would just be, it would be a reversal if you change it, but it is what your attorney wants.
And it, it also means a lot more cost and a lot more involvement with the lawyer and a lot more cost within something that the board has handled by themselves previously.
Can you understand on what the added cost would be of?
Every time he writes an eagle, a legal memo, every time you email, every time you have a call, every minute of his time is calculated and billed, every single minute.
So are you saying if he had to prepare one for the public separately?
Yeah, he has to, yeah. If that's to prepare one for the public, that's another expense. Um, it, it just, it, it just keeps getting more and more involved that, um, we're using the lawyer, uh, for work that I think we should be doing. And we are volunteers and we are not costing the taxpayers money. He is part of our budget, and we are a nonprofit institution, the taxpayers deserve to have the information and they deserve to know what they're paying for. And with him censoring and taking the time to write it up, I get concerned about extra expenses and what's being redacted.
So, uh, is anyone, uh, any other questions for this discussion or any other motion on this topic?
I think, oh, I just have a comment, I think Robert Petrowski has a business right to ask that we respect his attorney-client privilege. I don't think that those organizations are going to publish all the legal advice that they receive. Uh, the fact that he offered a lot of economic costs to write off a public-facing memo, uh, yeah, it contains some of the information that he's, uh, providing for us is, it, it is an expense well worth making, and I, I don't really see him writing too many legal memos in the future.
Would love to make that a motion.
Um, let's see, what was the, what was the language of this, um, packet before the change was made? So I just have the minutes from the October.
I don't think, I think we were under attorney-client without any written policy per se prior. So that, in the PDL that you got there is currently sort of how it stands, so.
Great, I think, I think we need to word this carefully too, because when you're talking about attorney-client privilege, it's not just memos. The memo that we released from Harry was a PDF attached, signed, it was in fact a memo. I think Robert's concern is that he's gonna be giving legal advice about legal strategy, and he doesn't want to release that for public consumption because it's just his opinion meant for us. If, if we ask him to do a public-facing document, I agree, Janice, that would be an extra cost. No one's asked him to do that. As far as preparation of documents, we're preparing the documents, the policies, the bylaws, and, and, uh, and the budget queries. Look, that, we're doing that, I'm doing it. So he, all he has to do is re- review it to make sure that it's in order, that's, and that, that's not much of a cost. So I, I don't think it's gonna be expensive, and I agree with you, Mary. I think it's, it's money well invested, because we need to protect ourselves from further litigation.
So trustee Janice, do you want to, um, word it similarly that, um, all legal memos prepar, prepared by legal counsel provided to trustees are considered attorney-client privilege, and so decide otherwise?
Can we include emails?
So, that is not noticed on the agenda, so that's what I was saying when I said you were going off topic.
That's not what's.
Sunshine responses, the, you know, whether documents are open or closed, emails. We can definitely talk, I would love to talk about that, 'cause I know a lot about that, um, but we would need to put it on a future agenda to talk through that.
Tonight's motion would be specific.
And it would not have to be a closed agenda, we can talk through how that works and how things are decided, whether they're open or closed and what the library's practices are, but that would have to be a different night. So this is just about this one, really the motion you made in October, whether you wanna keep that or, or what you wanna do with that, revisit it.
I'm not sure the memo excludes an email. What's your definition of a memo?
So, okay, so here's the deal. You guys can't decide things are closed, if there, the law provides whether things are open or closed. And attorney-client privilege is one of the things that is included in this clause. What you can decide and what you decided here last October was to make things open. So the sunshine law was created to try to bring sunshine to government activities, and it wants everything to have sunshine on it, honestly. It is created with exceptions that you can keep things closed, but you never have to keep things closed. You can always make it sunshine. And what you did back in October was take something that there is something in state law that allows you to close something so that you can have some private, it doesn't demand it, you're not in violation if you close it. You're in violation if you close something that's not supposed to be closed. So basically what you were doing is saying like, this is an area of the law where the state allows us to put an umbrella to keep kind of some privacy to discuss, and we want to remove that umbrella intentionally, so you have the ability to remove it. So what you would be doing tonight if Elon did this was not doing something insane necessarily. You're just putting the umbrella back on where the law allows, allows it to be. So you can't like close things that can't be closed, the law says whether it can be open or not, does that make sense? I don't know if I'm asking around to.
I, I still think that in, in modern workplace, I'm pulling this off. In the modern workplace, an email is a memo.
But here in this, I'm not, I'm really not trying to argue, we can talk about emails, it's just not what this issue is. This year, you specifically talked about the, the memos that Harry had, specifically the ones that, the one from December of twenty twenty-three, the one from October of twenty twenty-four. And those were things that he had given you as legal advice that were termed memos. Robert had given you, at least the only one that I know about that, that exists, right? And so that, what you wanted were those distillations of his, uh, I, in both cases, it's just they're kind of reciting what the law is and kind of giving you his advice about how to proceed based on what the law is. So if not, if not advice like here's, it, it would be different if there was a lawsuit.
Right.
Right, then, then it might be advice about how to proceed in the lawsuit. But it was just sort of the, the general advice that you guys decided to take that umbrella off and let people see. That was your decision, and you did make that decision without consulting Harry, the legal counsel at the time. I have a feeling he probably would not have wanted that to necessarily be public either, not 'cause he was trying to hide it, but because he knows the law, the law allows some umbrellas for legal stuff. Um, in this case, your new attorney has said he would prefer to have that umbrella back on, but he cannot make that decision because you've taken it off and you have the right to do that as a public entity. So if you wanna keep it off, we just need to make sure that Robert knows that going forward. And like I said, as far as I know, there's only one memo out there that exists, we'll just put it in this packet, and then if he issues any other memos, you know.
So I need to, we need to make a motion to rescind.
So I believe that we rescind the, just the board decision to provide copies of legal memos prepared by library counsel to public record in board packets. Moving forward, all legal memos prepared by library counsel to provide trustees with legal advice. So I'll keep that part of the text. So all legal memos prepared by library counsel to provide trustees with legal advice are considered attorney-client privilege until the board votes to waive such privilege.
How about unless?
Unless.
Unless counsel releases them.
He would, yeah, um, he would have to advise you to release them, so I think you were on the.
So, okay, so unless counsel.
Advises to release them. And, and for the record, I, I would like to have everything released. We weren't under litigation, I would release Echo and that. But.
But, I mean, what he's giving you is not a litigation issue, so you can re, that's, I mean, you can keep it released, you don't have to do that.
That's why we, that's why we needed to do, that's why we need Robert to look at it, we just need.
Yeah, and we have a motion now for, so I would take a second to this motion.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Garrity. Matt, please continue discussion on the motion specifically.
Any comments?
Any other friendly statements that you, something friendly on the.
No, we, we have the. We have the, the section at the end that says unless released by legal counsel, right? Unless by legal counsel.
Unless counsel advises to release.
Do we wanna make an amendment to that, because he offered to make a public-facing? Do we wanna?
I think we definitely can request from him at any time, okay, please provide anything that we need, including public-facing versions of any legal memo.
But if you're gonna do it, you, you should vote, to Janice's point, something like that where you're spending extra taxpayer dollars, you can vote in an open meeting as a sec, I would, you could do it in the same, but you could do a second motion to, if the group agrees, to request that he make a public. I would say if you say going forward, there's a memo that has not been released, that would be in this package, I don't know when I posted it.
If we want to make one good statement for future hypotheticals that we don't know yet, if we're comfortable doing that, or if we work on them together as we're, as they come.
So if you want, you can maybe make a separate motion and then discuss that. With this motion you have, I just wanna point out that, I mean, unless there's others that I don't know about, 'cause the first one I didn't know about right away, but uh, I mean, we, there is one legal memo that did fall under this up until now, no one has requested it. But technically, it would be in this month's board packet, if it's going forward, so the one, it's just that one on the labeling.
So why isn't it in the board packet?
Well, I mean, it, it will be on the public, it's the public board packet.
But why isn't it?
Because I haven't posted the board packet, it's after this meeting.
Okay, but Rob, did Robert advise you not to post it?
It, it would seem like he would say, Robert's asking us to, to
Correct.
Consider this a client, uh, attorney-client privilege.
He can't advise not to post it because you voted to make stuff public, so as it stands right now, it will be in tonight's packet unless you change it. And if you don't change it, if you change it going forward, that one will be tonight.
I think we should listen to his conclusions.
I do too.
And, uh, John, I, I just wanna clarify and make sure I heard you correctly. You said you wish everything could be open, except for pending.
Except for what's under litigation.
Okay, right now, uh, pending litigation, um, Robert has refused himself for that, so there should be no conflict between Robert Petrowski and, um, everything being released. Because he has no part in pending litigation. He refused himself, I just, I need to reiterate that. So, um, pending litigation in, in, uh, what I see that meaning in your wording is, um, let's say somebody fell and tripped, and there was a lawsuit, and there's pending litigation.
Is this comment about the motion?
It is about him saying he wants everything open except pending litigation. And what I'm saying is, right now, there is no pending litigation, so everything should be open, everything should be transparent.
So discussion right now, please, is on the motion.
So her motion is to change that, but going forward, so I'm just again pointing out, there's one that I will be putting in the packet tonight if it's going forward.
So, um.
Does that make sense?
Would you like to amend or make a friendly amendment for the effective date of this consideration for tonight's effective immediately? Meaning, just to be clear, so we understand.
So today, if we vote and this passes, then that memo does not go into the, the board packet.
I would think you would need it to be retroactive. You would have to make it retroactively. In, and I don't know, that's the tricky thing, since you've sort of had it up until this point, I just, I don't know, but because I just haven't posted the packet, it exists, it was done already, does that make sense? Like basically, the motion was to make any memos that exist, so you would have to make it, I don't know, it's tricky.
It is, when was that memo released?
He, I think he wrote it back in January, I didn't see it till I took over in the position. So I only saw it two weeks ago, but I think, uh, when did he send it to Echo?
Cause I didn't see it, referred emails, I don't have it, but yeah, it was back.
And is that the only one, no others?
Yeah, it's probably one to my knowledge, and that was a continuation of the work from a prior counsel. There was new information included in that.
So you could make it retroactive and, and retroactively shield that too, I mean, I, I don't know.
I think the board feels strongly to ask him to please create a public-facing version of that document, and that would be appropriate.
All, all I'm saying is, and this is not about sunshine, but depending on how you word it, if it's not retroactive, if someone sunshines it, they can have it. And it will be in the packet tonight, because that's, that's basically like, you basically made a new law superseding the law that everything is open till then, so you can make it retroactive tonight, but you gotta say that in your motion. I just don't want a situation where you say it tonight, somebody sunshines it, and you get mad at me because you didn't understand what's happening. So now you understand what's happening and you can make whatever decision you want. I have read the memo, I don't think it's that shocking.
I don't think it is.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't think there's a huge problem in releasing it, I, you know, but that's, that's up to you. I think that, my understanding was that he just wanted to make sure that going forward, he could use the privilege when he felt like he needed it.
So retroactive what, for one January?
You say twenty twenty-five, I don't know, that date, I apologize, I'm dumb, I'm.
And would it happen, happen at any point? Like, do we, does it matter like what? Does the retroactive date have to correspond to the monthly meeting date?
I don't think, I don't.
We didn't meet January, so you have to.
No, okay. So I think we just say January first, twenty twenty-five.
It's your motion.
I just wanna make sure it covers the date.
So does Nicholas move?
So the January first, twenty twenty-five?
Yes. When he sent it to you?
Yeah.
Did he just send it to you, I forget, like I just, it was mentioned and then I was like, where, I hadn't seen it.
Um. It was one of those comedy errors that, uh, I think he did send it only to me, and I thought he sent it to the group. And so, gosh, we, that's shocking, I realized.
Well, I mean, technically, I think it was done before, so it should have been in a previous board packet, but I didn't know about it till a couple weeks ago, so that's why I was gonna stick it in here, otherwise, but.
I, I agree with you, Tori, I don't think there's anything in that memo, and I, and I've asked Robert if he's gonna write a memo, we're gonna release it, so.
Yeah, I mean, he did know, he told.
I'm inclined to release it, so. If he doesn't wanna do that going forward, then don't do, don't write a memo.
I don't think he would be heartbroken, but it is up to you guys.
It is dated February twenty-seventh. I guess addressed to me. Okay, we have a motion and a second as revised, um, I don't know, do we have to read it fully again, or is it?
Why don't we read it, just to be sure, yeah? Cause then John is just saying he doesn't care if that one's read, so you just gotta decide, guys, I don't care, just tell him what you.
I, I, I'm just, I'm so, Mary, please, be honest, are you even gonna read it?
Yeah, I just have scribbles here for words, so.
I believe the motion is to rescind the October twenty twenty-four forward decision to provide legal memos to public record in board packets. And moving forward, all legal memos, um, are to be considered attorney-client privilege unless counsel advised, since she released effective. Retroactively for January first twenty twenty five. Do you need it on?
That's awesome.
All right, any other discussion on the motion as read? All right, hearing none, we will move to a vote, Trustee Garrity?
Yay.
Trustee Hayden?
Nay.
Trustee Hernandez Dicker?
Hi.
All right, motion fails. Would board member prefer to make a different motion?
I think we could have the same motion, but not retroactive.
So that would be just that one I put in this month's packet, right?
Same motion, just not effective.
Same ma- same motion, not retroactive, public paid for that memo, they should be able to read it.
All right, Trustee Garrity has made that same motion, I'm not gonna write it down, yeah, I've got it here, uh, so there's a second on that motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the updated motion without the effective date to be? Um, John, for my clarity, to that being met moving forward. This be the, the process, and then we'll release the current legal memo. Retracted, in favor, thank you.
I'm, I'm just confused that, John, you say this one was our reality, it's not gonna cause any harm, so it shouldn't be included in the motion. Then why are any memos included in the motion unless it, it is, um, against attorney-client privilege? I still do not understand. Why the memos prepared by library counsel to public record and board packets, as it says on our agenda. I do not think they should be non-transparent.
I think they are, I, I, just for clarity's sake and to help Tori, um. If Robert's giving us legal couns- counsel as attorney-client priv- he should put in the subject line. Privileged attorney-client, he should put that in the subject line. And that way, you don't have any confusion that he's counseling his client about pending litigation or anything like that. Um, I think that that would help, Robert, we can.
I, I would say that's. Decent, because everything we're discussing with them, um, the things that are, you know, we've got labeling materials coming up, we have. Um, you know, ad- advice on your subcommittees, having them review that. That, that isn't private, that, that isn't, um, it's okay that we make changes, it's okay that. We say, oh, well, we had said this, and now we'd like to change it to this, we have that right, we do that, we exercise that right to get things right. Um, I, I just, I would say that if it is something that is so severe that transparency would harm. A member of the board, or a member of the public, or a member of the library, I agree, that should be confidential information, but I believe everything else should be transparent.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
So I voted that way.
All right, any other discussion on the. Newly revised motion?
Could be read it again, please.
Yes, uh, we, the motion reads to rescind the October twenty twenty four board decision to provide legal memos to the public record. And board packets, and moving forward, all legal memos, um, to be considered attorney-client privileged unless counsel advises to release. So I think the emphasis is moving forward. There is one legal memo that has been provided by Mr. Petrowski that will be released in tonight's public packet. If this motion passes.
I would say a friendly amendment would, would add. That the only memos not subject to transparency. Are those of a confidential nature involving a member of the public, a member of the board, or a member of library staff.
So that would not rescind, that would make, was there even broader, is what you're saying, make more stuff public? It's what has always been public. Yeah, gotcha.
I think you'd have to redact that anyway, Tori, I mean, you're not gonna include personal information in a, in a sunshine request.
Just to be, we are not really talking about sunshine requests, I was just pointing out that this exists, and if someone had sunshined it before I put it in the public, I mean, it was slated to go in the public packet this month. But if someone had sunshined it, it is public information because you guys voted to take that umbrella off.
Right.
So I was just using that as an example of a way that someone could see it before I put it in the public packet, so.
So we have a friendly amendment to the current motion, uh, Trustee Garrity, you accept that friendly amendment?
Will you reread it, please?
I have the original motion, but I, I may need your help to how you wanted the friendly amendment worded, um. Is it to release anything? It's a double language, is it to release anything except those that are confidential in nature, public, uh, or just.
Or to allow transparency?
So the current motion is that the. All memos, um. All memos would be considered attorney-client privilege unless counsel advises to release. So I'm not clear where you would want to amend that.
Do you want specific information withheld, Janice, is that what you're trying to do?
No. Um, at this point, my understanding of the motion. Is that, uh, Robert can withhold whatever he needs to withhold. What I'm saying is that we as a board are requesting that all memos are transparent. Unless. They, uh, concern privileged information regarding a member of the public, a member of the board, I don't know if that's redundant, or a member of the library. You know, uh, unless there's a, a privileged, uh, a confidential piece of information. I, I don't know if you all could possibly word that better, so, yeah, the whole amendment is kind of.
I think the am- if I could, I think the amendment is, is a whole different topic about. You know, making more things that are, that could be, so again, you never have to put the umbrella to cover legal advice, but it is allowed for mostly, most legal advice. Um, and, so, I mean, we can add that to a future agenda to talk about. What parts of legal advice you take that umbrella off for, but today, it's just about.
The base memo?
The just memos, well, opinions and memos that are sent to you by your attorney, which, the default is that is privileged.
Just motion.
Unless he says, I mean, it's okay if you put, unless otherwise, that means maybe you could say, I don't care.
I think it's in there, there's only one memo we're talking about.
So I would withdraw the friendly amendment on the point that if that is an issue, we can add that to a future, uh, make it a future agenda item.
Yes.
But Janice, if you're saying you think you would like it to be more transparent, and what this is doing is closing it back up, then you would just vote no on this amendment, not the late, yeah.
I understand.
So.
Um, so with that presented, any other discussion on the current motion? All right, hearing none, we will move to a roll call vote, uh, Trustee Garrity?
Hi.
Trustee Fernandez? Trustee Hayden?
Nay.
Motion Garrities. And you all for what hand for that? All right, back to our motion then. The next item, uh, of old business is labeling library materials, uh, this one is even older, so I wanted to start us off by providing context with board members who are not seated. At that time, so I'm invited for the trustees, um, that were not serving at the fall. Our August twenty twenty four meeting, there was an agenda item titled "Review of the June Conversation with Legal Counsel Regarding Collection Access." At that meeting, there was a motion made that I, that, um, I agreed to provide context, uh, Janice Hayden moved to request that Director Brummett. Provide a list of two to three dozen LGBTQ-related Library of Congress subject headings and spine labels available from the library vendors to choose from at the next regular meeting. Additionally, Trustee Hayden moved that Director Brummett review recent requests for reconsideration to ensure subject headings for those previously challenged materials are included in the list. In addition, uh, to the research provided by Executive Director, there was a summary of the June twenty twenty four closed meeting with prior legal counsel that was read into the record by the President Tuckness. The September twenty twenty four agenda labeling library materials entitled Executive Director Brummett providing trustees with an overview of how the library currently uses a variety of spine labels. As finding aids and explaining how label, labeling books by subject heading would be different. Then, at, uh, at the direction in the August, uh, regular meeting, the Executive Director gave the trustees a list of the LGBTQ-related Library of Congress. Subject headings, a selection of possible spine labels of, available from the library vendors, and an estimate of how many children's and adult materials in the CCL collection would be labeled if all categories identified were used. Moving forwards to twenty twenty five, the board has also received, as we recently discussed, a detailed review from our current legal counsel on this matter, Mr. Petrowski. The board has reviewed this combined research and multiple legal perspectives at this point, so I would yield the floor, uh, back to Trustee Hayden. Uh, there's further action or discussion on this topic as you had originally requested, so you have the floor.
Um, after receiving, uh, Mr. Petrowski's, um, detailed report, I don't believe we have met as a board and discussed this, we were just handed the information. Um, to me, it went back to what the previous lawyer had said, there are, um. There is great jeopardy for the library, whatever decision they make. And, um, um. So. We have to discuss. How do we feel about the information we received in that packet, that packet needs to be discussed.
Is there other discussion?
I will say, I have, um. I encouraged to find out what other libraries were doing at that time, last fall, I visited. Three libraries physically and called two other libraries, all out of counties, all different counties, different librarians, different library systems. Um, some did not have backlash, some chose not to have backlash by using, uh, labeling. Um, in reviewing the various lawsuits from many of the states around us and across the nation, um, it. I would not be in favor of labeling, um, due to, uh, the legal challenges, due to respect for individuals of diverse backgrounds. Getting labeled themselves, and pigeonholed, um. I, I understand the concern about books, I, I really do, I read through forty of the books that were pulled by concerned members of the community. And I agree, there were many of them that I was not comfortable with. But I don't know that my personal feeling of being comfortable with something versus, uh, someone coming at it from a whole different perspective, or as one of the speakers tonight said, for research. Uh, you know, as an assignment, um, you know, i- i- if you are pro-labeling, you still have to read about. You still have to reread about the other groups to discuss and make your, your point. Um, so at this point, I, I would not be in favor of labeling the library materials, and I, I think. I don't know how we pursue at this point to recognize the concern in the community, and yet to recognize, uh, the freedom. Of speech of ident- of individuals to come to a public library they pay for, and have access to whatever information is, uh, is approved. So. I'm, I'm kind of stuck.
Other discussion or, uh, your motion?
You know, it's an issue that we can ignore away. I will tell you that, I heard from many members of their community who don't feel comfortable bringing their children to the library. No one wants to marginalize other children. I'm, I'm a ethnic minority here. Yeah, I, I know what it's like to be different than everybody else, don't dwell on it. You know, and, and you're right, we should be representing a wide variety of perspectives, I am in favor of having diverse viewpoints. But as I pointed out before, when we had a discussion about the American Library Association, don't necessarily feel that we have a library that represents diverse viewpoints. And so, um. It is challenging because, you know, Robert's report was thorough, and it highlighted the risks that are associated with, um. Labeling books, but I don't think that that means that we end the conversation about what are we gonna do? We can't ignore families who have stopped patronizing the library because of the organization of the content and how it's found. That doesn't mean that they're ignoring the people or demeaning the people who are, are featured in the, you know, LGBTQ-themed books. So that's, that's, that's a, a preconceived notion that a lot of people have, is that, well, this is driven by hate, no, it's not. And, you know, it, we. You know, legally, there's, there's a lot to consider, there's a lot at stake. And so I, I appreciate that you took the time to read those books, Janice, because I didn't take the time to read them as well. And I think it's, 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 we're gonna have to have a information campaign and, you know. Inform the public about what kind of material we have in the library, so that parents know what's on the shelves and they are not surprised. That's something that I think the library has to be honest with, is what is on our shelves. And so that people can feel like they're able to make informed decisions about what happens when they step into the doors of the Christian county libraries.
Of any library around the world.
Yeah.
If, if, the, the library system, um. For thousands of years, it's been based on inclusive information, uh, people went and got the information they were interested in. I don't read romance novels, I don't go to that section, I don't read them. Um, if I saw something, uh, that I didn't think is appropriate, I, I can scan through the book, and if I don't like it, I put it back on the shelf and I go someplace else. Um, I don't take, uh, personal offense at that, I just know I choose maybe not to choose that book. Because I know someone else may need that book, it's just not to my taste, and, um. And, and that's where the issue lies, do you restrict materials and restrict access to broad materials, to broad breadth of materials to the entire community? Or do we have a better educational campaign of how to, um. Choose not to access, uh, books. That they don't agree with.
Well, the problem is that the books are standard everywhere.
I, I understand that.
I'll give, I'll give you an example, I talked to two parents whose children love soccer. So, there's a graphic novel, I think it's called like The Breakaways, and the kids went to read the book, and, you know, when you're. When you have children, they look at the pictures, right, they, they scan through the book to see what's in there, and they, and kids were. Scanning the book, and then they came to a page where there's two girls that are kissing each other, this is a child. And so that parent felt very uncomfortable by having that there. You know, I am aware of books that are put, they're placed in, in high-traffic areas in the library in front of the children's section that have graphic sexual depictions in them. Well, what happens if my nine-year-old son is, you know, bumbling around, is I'm checking out books, and opens that book, he can't even see that picture. And so this is why we have to launch, I think, a massive information campaign, there should be informed consent, perhaps we. Uh, change the application on, for the library card. And let parents know, hey, we have picture, we have books in our library that have very explicit language, there are graphic depictions of, of sex acts that people can, can. Perform of one another, let people know what they're getting into, it's informed consent. But we can't just say, well, you know, the, the lawyer, you know. He, he, he let us, let us know what risks we expose ourselves to if we take action, but we can't just stop. Um, working together and finding a common sense solution, because again, this is not an effort to disenfranchise people in this community, but we can't ignore. A significant portion of our, of our residents who are very unhappy with the current state of the library.
Yeah, I took art history in college, and, um, I was exposed to things, I was very, very sheltered and very, very naive. And art history, um, I had to ask people to explain things to me, I had no idea what these pictures were about, but we were required to study art history and study. Uh, why that subject matter was presented at that time, why that. But we were required to study art history and study why that subject matter was presented at that time, why that artist presented it, how the artist present, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, that was a study. I, I, I made a statement.
How old were you in college? How old were you in college?
From, I guess I entered at mid seventeen to late twenties, maybe twenty-one.
So you, you were mature enough to understand what a human body looks like, but what are the same?
Oh, I've been there in shelter, TV didn't show anything.
But what about like the five-year-olds, you know, we have young people in that area.
I understand, but I think it comes down to, we have to, the patronage, the patrons need to be responsible. They need to assume responsibility, understand not placing things in, on a great display that is right in your face. I understand that's a concern, I understand that. But I also think we have to respect each individual's sense of responsibility. And I know that's very difficult for some parents, it's not as difficult for other parents. There is no solution that is going to make everybody happy.
But we need to strive, we need to change something that hasn't, I mean, we haven't made an effort. But why we're.
Because we, as a board, have not discussed this since last fall. It's been brought up at every single meeting by the people making comments, we have not discussed it since last fall and we have not proposed solutions or suggestions. That's on us.
It absolutely is, and that's why I'm trying to have a conversation right now about being.
How would you propose to do that?
I think that it's informed consent, we change the application. We talk about what children are going to have access to. We let parents know, your child will be able to be unattended in this library, starting at the age of nine. And if they have a little library card, they can check out any R-rated movie they want. Doesn't matter if they're by themselves. Hey, in this library, we have books that are available in the adult section that will teach your son, that goes where it's like, get to the point of, you know, we have books, we have content in this, in this library that ensures children how to go on Tinder and find a hookup. We have books that, in the children's section in NIXA, that tell children, there's a dictionary, it's the Queen's English, lets them identify what kind of gay person they are based on their body shape. I mean, we need to come together and make a list of, a general list of what kind of content children are potentially exposed to in this library so that parents know. Because I know people whose children have opened up books and they've been shocked by what they see and they never come back. But if a parent knew these kinds of books exist, I didn't know that those kinds of books exist. My children are avid readers. And then, as they started growing, they started exploring different sections of the library. And that's when I became aware of what's going on. And so now, I don't bring my kids to the library.
Okay, question, yes. Do you ever go to the mall to go shopping?
I do.
With your family?
I do.
Okay, but for what reason?
I don't like the store that's here, so I use a lot of my shopping online.
Okay. You know, most people, at some time or another, let's say have, still go to the mall. I see a lot of things at the mall that I turn my head. Because it's not something I want to gawk at or watch, it's not my business. And so, out in the public, at restaurants. My family was in a restaurant last week where there were some people who have made different choices than I would make. But they were acting politely, they were enjoying their meal and they were just another patron. And that's how my family took that. There is never going to be no exposure. And to pin all of that on the library, I think, is unfair with today's society, with television, with electronics, with phones, with, and with books.
But what's wrong with about letting people know what's in the library?
How do you let them know what to research or not research when they're doing their homework on a computer?
I mean, that's the size of point, like this is, this is an institution and we are responsible for what happens in these stores. Again, what is wrong?
No, we are responsible to provide information to all members, all patrons, all members of the public. They are not responsible for holding their hand through the stacks.
But what I'm advocating here is informed consent, let the parents know. What's wrong with that?
Because. You mean on their library card?
On your application, when you sign off, it's on there.
On your application? If we had visited that before and it was not pursued, how do, John Echo, how do you feel about that?
I think it's, I think the goal here is to help parents, right? Isn't that the goal, to help parents get their kids to the books that they want them to get to? And not get surprised, you know? If you're in the romance section, you don't expect a book on physics. So, and I think, based on legal counsel and what I've heard from you all, we don't want labels. And I don't think labels by themselves solve the problem. So, I don't think there's an action on this, really. I know we can, we need to keep looking, though, I agree. People need to know when they're in a section that, be careful, there are some things that are agent appropriate. And I think we'll get to that. We're going to have a change in, some changes in policy. Some will have a new executive director maybe have some ideas, you know, I mean, we need to look at it.
Well, Mary, you had brought up a valid point about informed consent. May I suggest that we table this discussion at this time? Or make a motion that labeling, maybe make a motion that labeling is not the appropriate answer at this time? But that we would like to pursue samples of informed consent for the library. So, that's what I would motion.
So there is something on the library cards, right? That there's a statement, if you're signing up, if we're talking about kids, right? That says that.
Okay, since I made a motion, don't we have to second the motion?
Yep.
Does the discussion?
Without the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I apologize, can you say again?
That at this time, the board has made a decision that labeling specific books is not the appropriate action to take. But we will be pursuing informed consent, specifically, or specific informed consent information for parents and families.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Any discussion on the motion?
So just to say, there's a variety of informed, not to say, I mean, that's your job if you wanted to change what the application looks like, we can show you that. There is, of course, a statement, first of all, of course, no parent has to get a card for their kid. So if they do, they have to sign something saying that the parent or guardian is responsible for their use of the, everything, for their use of the library, including whether they come to the library or not, for everything they do within the library, everything they take out of the library. So that includes, of course, fines if they lose books or the dog eats it or whatever is the case, but also for what they check out. And then, just to say toward that end, I would just say that you guys did do something, you didn't not do anything. You did direct the previous executive director to come up with a War Parent Resources, which we sent months and months doing. And it's a beautiful page, just to put a word out there on the website. It has a lot of information, it does show the card itself, so that you can kind of see the process of getting a card. Of course, you know, it reminds parents who might want to be in the building when materials are checked out, that there's a way to request that specifically, and we've had a handful of people that have done that. And then it goes through all the resources, the way to use the catalog, the way to look at outside resources even, to kind of view what the material might be. And a kind of mapping of where things are in the library. Because like Echo said in her summary, a library is made with labels, but the labels are not subject-based, they're finding-age-based. So they're, you know, the spine label will have either the Dewey Decimal Number, if it's nonfiction, right? Which tells you where in the library to look for that particular book, so that you can look at the catalog and then go find what you're looking for. It'll tell you the age, you know, the recommended age for that book by the publishers and the authors, which is generally how libraries do that, they try not to get complicated to make other ways of figuring out what the ages are because as everyone here has said, you know, that really varies widely depending on the person. And then, you know, thanks to the Secretary of State's rule a couple of years ago, we were already doing this, but we had to every year submit to the state kind of our plan and our map and our policies that make sure that all the things that the publisher says about what ages things are recommended for are in that part of the library and that that's clearly labeled. So, we were kind of already doing that, but now we have to gather that information and submit it every year to the state so that they know that we're doing that. So, and all of that is kind of discussed in some measure on that page. So, that Parent Resources page came completely out of what you're saying, like an informed consent type thing. So maybe it is, you know, something like, if you have a child and you're concerned, maybe check out our Parent Resources page and study carefully, you know, where in the library books that you and your family might want to check out are, you know, et cetera. Those, it goes through when children are allowed to be unattended, you know, et cetera, et cetera, what the requirements are for that. So you did do that, which, and I think it's a, you know, it's a really useful resource. I do think it was something that actually we had already been talking about way before there was anything in the community, having a place for families who have parents, you know, who are new to the community or new to libraries. Because we do get a lot of families coming in through storytime, all the way from babies, since we have baby bounce things, that maybe haven't used libraries in a while, like you both are saying, and maybe haven't been in a library and kind of seen what the modern library offers. So, the only other thing I would say about this specific motion is that second part is action, but if you need staff to take some specific steps towards that, you're going to have to tell me what those are. Because that's pretty basic.
Yeah, James, I didn't know if you wanted this to be an item for our main meeting.
I agree, that second portion, I agree. Agenda item for, so just scratch off the last part about the parental consent. And let us bring our ideas with the agenda item and examples in the next meeting and make sure they meet the standards that we feel will be most helpful to everybody in the public. Because we do need to honor their concerns and we do need to offer what we can.
So a copy of the application I can include, and maybe we can walk through the website page again. We did that one time when it was created, but we could do that in the public again. We have lots of people attending, so it's Like Who Loves a Good Place to let people know.
Trustee Hayden, do you accept the amended motion?
Perfect.
Okay, so current motion on the table is the board will take no action on labeling at this time, correct?
Correct.
Any discussion on the revised motion? Hearing none, I will go to a roll call vote, Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Trustee Hayden?
Aye.
Trustee Ben is the call. Motion carries. Thank you all for the discussion. That finally brings us into new business, I know, but we're shivering up here, this is quite cold in the office. New business first, I have, there is our employer's insurance plan renewal, Tori, I would yield forward to you for that.
Hopefully, this one will be quick this year, for the first time in multiple years. We have an increase of only 9.9% in our health insurance rates, which last year it was almost 20%. So we budgeted for 19.8%, so this is less than half of our budgeted increase amount, hooray! So, we were proposing to make no changes because that's what was recommended by our health people because it's well within our budgeted amount. And so, we just need you guys to hopefully approve our health insurance for the year. And then, open enrollment process June first. So usually it's at this meeting and then we'll start enrolling people, assuming that we approve. And often, we have to give you multiple options because we can't afford what we used to have. So this is a rare year where we can very solidly afford what we used to have, as long as you guys are okay with it. If you have questions, especially for the new people too, it's usually this little form, which takes a while for the health people to get it to us, but if you have questions about how it's paid or anything, just let me know.
Thank you for fixing what I missed, if you don't mind, scroll into the last page of the packet.
And I do apologize, I just sent it today because the health insurance people, it takes forever for them to.
Okay, so it will be in the packet that it's supposed to have, so.
And I think Nicholas has it.
Okay.
If not, that's all right.
Nicholas.
If.
No worries.
Anyway.
All right, I think you were really.
But yes.
The only other packet that's. Is on the lower increase, I would hear a motion to approve. To approve, is that the request?
Yep.
Motion, I would hear a motion to approve.
So moved.
You made the motion?
So moved.
Trustee Hayden? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, roll call vote, Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Trustee Hayden?
Aye.
Trustee Ben is the call. Motion carries.
All right. So the next item on our new business is the phone services review. I brought this concern forward in February with our prior interim executive director and more recently reviewed some of the areas that the, I think that the board needs to better understand to ensure we're effectively serving our constituents and stakeholders. With that, I would move that Tori and the team prepare a comprehensive report of the current telephone system policies, procedures, and related workflows for presentation at the May or Tuesday's meeting. This report should address the questions outlined in the April second email correspondence and include any relevant documentation of current workflows.
So, the reason I asked you to put it on this meeting is because we can talk about that now and try to figure out exactly what you need and why, if there's a problem you wanted to address. And I've gathered most of the information you asked for, so we can just talk through what we do, similar to last time with social media. And then if you have other things, I can either circulate them. But it was a big enough, broad enough, and I wasn't totally sure what the problem was we were trying to solve. So if you want to talk through what you were thinking and why you brought this up?
I, as a patron, have called multiple times, I've not had the phone answered. So I'm concerned as a constituent in South Christian County that is very rural, it takes me about half an hour drive to come to this branch location in order to come here, but I'm unable to access the services as a patron. So I've had instances where I've called multiple times, I did choose to drive into the branch and arrive to have multiple staff in attendance, no lines or waiting, no crowds or events. So I'm quite concerned that we serve all our patrons, especially those that are represented in rural areas, by answering our phones.
So, and was this just that one time before the board meeting?
They've answered multiple times.
Okay, well, for sure, let us know when that happens. So yours is the first complaint we've ever gotten about phones.
Trustee Gary, do you have this experience?
I've had that experience several times.
Okay, which branches were you guys calling?
Here, the Sparta branch is really good, they pick right up. And I'm surprised because you have double the number of staff located here at Sparta. So I'm not, is there a way to answer the phone?
So, we can answer the phone. And Echo had asked whether we train staff properly, so staff are definitely trained on how to answer the phone. Certainly, the first thing that staff are trained, and it's even in our interview questions for all frontline staff, are just like any kind of public service retail type, public-facing position. It's kind of customer service 101, it's really emphasized here, that's what we try to do. We do run our staff lean, we try to only have enough staff to be able to manage, you know, checkouts and whatnot because we have a small budget and we want to make sure that we spend as much of that budget on patron-facing programs as possible. So, in one of the interview questions, it says, if you have a long line of people after a storytime or something like that and the phone is ringing, and what do you do? Right? And the right question is, or the right answer to that question is, you serve the people in front of you, you let voicemail, which we do have, pick up the messages. And then after there's a lull in patient activity, you answer the voice messages and do that. And of course, staff are trained to come in and look if there are messages pending from the night before. They answer those at the beginning of the morning and then distribute those around. So of course, if you have been calling Ozark or NIXA, those do have, you know, they're more high-traffic branches. So certainly, there are times when it might need to go to voicemail. Did either of you leave voicemails that were not returned?
I just couldn't get to a person.
Well, I mean, yes, but if you leave a voicemail, then a person would call you back. I don't, I just don't understand.
I did like a year or two ago and I did get a call back.
So Echo had asked whether we have a dedicated person to answer the phones, we do not. We don't get that much phone traffic. So, we do get phone traffic for a number of reasons. So we get people asking the hours and locations. We sometimes get people who do need help with booking rooms or if they want to see whether or not the book they requested might have come in, or if they have requests and. might have come in, or if they have requests. And, and we do have staff that are very willing to help. But if a staff person is, um, helping someone book a room, they are definitely trained not to tell them to hold while they get a different call, but to let that next call go to voicemail and then to take that voice message promptly and, and give it elsewhere. Um, she had also asked a lot about how the phone systems work. So, we need.
Can I echo just a second? Echo, did you leave messages and were your, uh, questions or your calls returned?
I needed to know whether I need to get in the car and drive thirty minutes to the branch. And so, since some, no one was able to help answer that, I chose to drive thirty minutes to the branch, to arrive to multiple staff without a line and was, and surprised at the response.
But did you, did you leave a message though, no?
I was in a position to need to decide if I needed to get in the car and drive to the branch or if I, if I would.
Well, one suggestion is if it's a, if it's a library-wide, all the branches have staff and the, the smaller ones do generally have less patrons at most times. So, if you don't feel like, if it is really urgent and you can't leave a message and it is something about a whole, a lot of those things, we can tell you even from another branch if it's like, what time is, um, this happening or, you know, if you're trying to locate something on the website, um.
So, we can certainly go through the questions. You specifically asked me to bring this, make a motion to do the research and not to do this tonight. So, if we want to do this tonight, my questions are the same as that I sent on April second.
Okay, yeah.
So, how many call, how many, uh, incoming calls does Christian County, like they receive on average per day or week at each branch?
So, we, that just really varies widely. I mean, it really depends on what's going on in the branch, what people need. I will say again, um, and I, you know, we've never had complaints about the calls or how they're done. We are not able to answer them all the time, but it's not a primary, uh, I, I mean, I guess I just would make, try to make sure we have a problem to solve. So, um, so we do look at branch traffic and each branch manager in terms of patron traffic, staffs their branch appropriately, just like you would at a, you know, any sort of public facing thing. Um, so that if, you know, if it's story time, they usually try to have one additional person, you know, around to manage the high-traffic times. And of course, those times, if there are calls during those times, then you have that extra person to be able to manage that. But I don't, I don't know if it's consistent enough to be able to.
But is, that may be a possible solution, uh, for board members, um, because, um, there may be things that are urgent, uh, and do involve management. John being treasurer has, um, urgent business here. Um, Mary and I have occasional business that we feel is important here. Echo being the president board has urgent business all the time.
Yes.
I mean, it's all on her. Um, so is it possible to provide her with an alternative phone number that would go to, uh, instead of to the front desk, but to a member of staff who is basically always on duty, who could possibly answer a question that is urgent? Say what? Oh, sorry, Tori's number. Oh, I mean, uh, sorry. I, I'm putting you on the spot. But I mean, uh.
Yeah, I don't think the only problem which I'm solving is mine. I, I am probably the most flexible and willing to accommodate. I spend hundreds of hours volunteering for this lifetime, so that is not the problem. The problem is the, the constituents that we serve living in very rural areas. I am willing to get in the car and drive down here. My rural neighbors may be willing to abandon getting services from this library.
Well, I would definitely have other, yeah, but other people, again, we've never heard this complaint. So, if it is a complaint.
If you don't answer the phone, when would you get this complaint?
If they left a message, we would call them back and they would tell us, I think, right? I mean, that's, that's.
So, do we have any tracking into this from the stands of transparency? I know working in a business office, our phone system has built-in tracking of calls, surveying rates. Does our phone system have something like that?
So, our phone system does have a way to look at traffic. Um, we don't keep, so we keep a lot of stats at the library. We like write down every month and keep in spreadsheets and spend staff, you know, taxpayer-funded staff hours collecting tons of data. How many people walk in and out of the branch? How many people check out books? How many people attend programs? How many minutes are used on the computers? Wireless minutes, regular minutes? We count all of those. But usually when we're collecting a stat, it's in order to inform either a need from, like, uh, uh, an express demonstrated widespread need from patrons or to do statewide reporting to keep our library status, um, official. So, there are certain stats that we have to stem to the state library every year in order to be a certified library in the state. So, phone, phone use is not one of those. Phones are more like just a tool to be able to access. Now, I mean, if we knew more people, so maybe this can be the public announcement, if people are having problems with the phones, then like I wouldn't even know where to begin. And just collecting it to collect it feels like a waste.
I think, yeah, they call it, and it would be insightful if that's something that's already provided by our phone system. I'm certainly not.
Call abandonment? I don't know that. I can, that's.
I would add that's a built-in statistic. It would cost us no additional money.
I did look, thanks to your questions, and I mean, you can see the number of calls. It doesn't keep that information for long and we don't, we've never tried to keep it. So, we could look into keeping it if there was a reason or a particular type of data you wanted. Call abandonment, I haven't seen. But again, I, again, this is a PSA, please leave a message because it doesn't have to be an abandoned call. We can just call you back.
I got another suggestion.
Oh, and also for the administrators, any branch can transfer you. So, if you're trying to get an administrator, any branch can transfer you to an administrator. So, you don't have to do that through the high-traffic areas. So, if you reach a busy signal in Nixa or Ozark and you're just trying to get me, which, or Nicholas, you can call and they can transfer you. In that case, that night I was already in here setting up the room. So, I, I would also, you would have had to also leave a message on, on my office phone voice.
Is there contact information available online or do we just need to have business cards?
Uh, so there's no, all, you just call the circulation desk and just ask for us. There's no like dial-in extension thing. So, you just would have to ask. Now, to Janice's point, perhaps where you were going with that, Janice, is that once upon a time, we did have a director's phone, which was a cell phone. So, again, if this is just about contacting whoever's in this seat, um, that is something that we found that people didn't use that often, including trustees. It was pretty rare. So, we decided to get rid of that expense because we're always trying to do that when it's not used that much and just have, you know, emails or have them leave messages. But if that's something that the trustees needed, if you find that you're not able to get your director, um, when you need them, then you could do that. In this case, again, I didn't have a phone or anything. I was in here setting up the room for this.
I have a second idea.
Yeah.
Uh, possibility. Um, how many people are usually on the desk during busy times?
It really depends on the branch and it's up to the branch managers to kind of manage that flow.
Okay. Is, I know people do this at, at companies all the time when you call the persons doing things online. Uh, they'll pick up the phone and they'll say, hello, Christian County Library, Nixa Branch, whatever they say, and say, are you able to hold for a moment? Can you hold for a moment? Even if they have a, and the person, Echo could have said, no, could you just answer a quick question for me? Blah, 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 or connect me and then go back to the person in line. I understand patrons are first. Um, but if there's that many patrons at a busy time, presumably there'd be more than one person available in the library, uh, that could, uh, at least, uh, answer the phone and say, can you hold? I think there's been maybe two times in my entire life where I said, no, I can't. And they have addressed me and it was very quick and they got back to their business. But I think that's a viable, uh, training option.
So, for sure, they do that. I, that was like an oversimplification that if you only have the choice between answering a phone and a patron, you take the patron in front of you. But absolutely, when there's multiple people, someone will help the patrons and someone will answer the phone. They will either put them on hold or both people will tag team, get the patrons helped quickly and then answering the phone. Also, there are multiple phones in other rooms. So, often there might be in a high tra, like a story time, you might have three staff people up at one of these bigger branches. So, two may decide to do this. And if there's a, a rash of phone calls all in a row, then one of the patrons can go off desk to some of the back areas where they prepare things and there are phones there too, where they can all check the messages in any of the branch, you know, or in any, in that branch, and they can answer those questions. So, that definitely happens already for sure. So, I think it is more about the branch managers and then the staff, um, trying to best manage those high-traffic situations, um, as they come. Um, so I'm sorry, Echo, was that, did that answer that part of the question? So, there are some analytics. We don't use them to track anything or keep any of that data for any reason. I'm open to looking at what those are, the call abandonment. I can see if that's an, if that's one of them. I don't know.
Uh, yeah, I'm curious on what our total call volumes are and if the system is already currently able to track that. So, it's no additional cost to us.
So, there, there is a way to tell you how many. I don't know how long they keep that or per branch. Um, it's tracked through the actual physical hardware. We don't have any service that does that or anything. Um, so, like, but I did look into it after your questions enough to find out like, you know, that you can go and, you know, the actual physical box, it has a name down the, the box itself is called a PBX, you know, something?
Yeah.
PBX? Somebody knows about telecom? A PBX box and the PBX box itself. So, it's actually in the hardware. There's no, we don't pay any extra operating kind of analytics for that. Again, because the state library doesn't track that and we, we just really had, didn't know that there was a problem. So, if there is, we'd like to hear more widely about when that's happening, where that's happening, and then we could start to drill down to try to solve that.
So, we also received an email recently that the phone systems were down. So, it tells me that happened. So, I'm curious if there's outages or if that's what's just truly anomaly.
So, an email, uh, was that?
On Facebook. I apologize. I know we're involved.
Oh, on our library Facebook. So, yeah, that's in your packets, in your consent agenda packet that we went through in the director's report. That'll be in everybody's packet when I post it. So, that's good news. Hooray! So, we just got a network upgrade. Um, that's a big, big news here in the library. So, um, REAL, which is a program funded by the federal government, provides discount internet service, equipment, and technical support.
But it took you offline while you were in Charlotte.
It did, it did. Correct. To libraries and schools. And so, um, we got all three new servers and equipment, a total network upgrade for all four branches. And, uh, so the phones had to be down for that day because we had to physically switch to new servers and it is an internet-based phone system, which was one of your questions too. So, um, we let the public know that. That wasn't like a comment on Facebook. That was Nicholas's department putting out a proactive like, hey, phones are gonna be down. We'll let you know when they're back up, um, just in case. And actually, they weren't down for the whole day. Um, the staff, again, totally free to the library. So, it's like such an amazing resource. Came in, um, from the state to install that. And so, it was kind of a rolling outage of both internet and phones as they installed all the new servers and filters and stuff in the, in all the branches. So, that's totally unrelated to the other, but, um, but it's good to kind of, you know, disentangle those and make sure, you know, it's not a part of the same situation. What else? I looked up some things. So, tell me what you want to know about the list. Or just any other questions that any of you had. Part of why I said, whenever there's substantive stuff like this, like that's a lot of information to send in an email. I mean, I know we trained you guys as, in the orientation, if there's like a piece of information a trustee needs, we are happy to just send that by email. But if it's something where there's like ten questions that are substantive research, it's better to bring that for a couple of reasons to a board meeting. One, to give us time. And if I hadn't had time, we would have to do it another time. But also so that all five of you can hear at once and ask questions and make sure you're getting, you're actually getting the information you want. Um, but, uh, yeah, what else would you like to know?
Um, I think that's good for me for tonight.
Okay. Well, if there's more, I encourage you because it helps the public to know too. Um, I mean, we do like our phone system and, uh, we have, we own our phones, which is pretty rare these days. Um, and so, you know, uh, the last time we checked, which was a year ago into the phone plan, um, you know, getting most new phone systems, you have to do a, a lease model where you lease the phone, you lease the equipment. So, that ups the amount because you're paying kind of like when you try to get Word or some of these internet, you know, processing programs and things. You can't just buy the physical thing anymore. You have to pay monthly to have the, the thing. And that's what, um, what most phone systems go to. So, every time we look at a new system, they always say, keep these phones because you own them. And so, it's way cheaper just to provide the, the lines than it is to get a whole new system. Um, and again, think about that for the new director. It would not be impossible to add another phone back for the director if that's something that you guys find yourself needing to contact that person more regularly. And that way, you know, you can use a, you know, a library-provided device.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Quick question. Mary Miller was under the impression that we had two cell phones, one for the director and one for the communication director. Do you have a phone, Nicholas?
I don't have a phone. We have a data line for.
Okay, so you don't have a phone instrument?
We have an outreach phone for the, don't we? It's the outreach department.
There's the outreach has a phone, which is the old director phone.
Is it a physical phone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's for outreach when they do deliveries.
And we did use to, use to use the phone, but again, we stopped paying for the plan just to save money because, I mean, Renee would very rarely get calls, um, on that. Most, most people just these days use email. It just seems to be more, um, you know, I don't know. Just use more. People don't like leaving voicemails anymore.
Echo, you started a motion, so is.
Uh, it got overspoken, so I will suspend my motion. Um, I was confused that, that ask for the board to leave that as to an agenda to approve that research to be done. So.
So, Echo, you want me to just look into the call abandonment? Is that the number you're looking for?
Um, that's fine. If that's something that's easily added, we can continue this onto the agenda in the, in the next meeting if you want. But I think you've done a research that you thought you didn't have time to do, so.
Yeah, I tried. Tried to get it together. Yeah. I didn't have time to like prepare it and send it to you in an email, but I wanted to have it prepared, um, for this. And it helps that we had the internet people here because I could ask, um, I did ask again, like, what do you think of these phone systems?
So, it's a motion for phone abandonment, such?
Yeah, do you want a motion for that or you're good?
Um, I mean, these motion, these agenda items continue to fall. So, I'm not sure if we want phone services review. Do you think you'll find other information that you want to look at? Or do you want us to add a new, new business item for phone abandonment rate for May?
I think I, I'm okay with what we're doing with the phones, but I want to make sure we're answering all your questions. So, if you have more questions, you can ask them now.
How do we answer all of our patients' phone calls?
Uh, I think so.
That, that is my question. How do we answer all of the patients' phone calls?
If, if they can't get someone who answers, then they need to leave a message and we will be happy to call them back. Is that, is that an answer that works?
So, then I guess what I would add to the May agenda would be, uh, a recommendation on a strategy to communicate that message so with a focus on our loyal patrons that, um, for their awareness that they, they call, they will not be serviced unless they leave a message. So, we can communicate a strategy around that.
I mean, I suppose we could change the voice message. I think it does, does it say please leave a message on our D and M? It, it already says that when they call. It says please leave a message.
So, I think to encourage communication with our patrons, maybe could we do messaging on our different platforms to say, hey, we are eager to serve you. Please leave us a message if you call or reach us during our busy hours. Again, I look at this from a customer service lens. So, my customer service experience is to not reach someone. To your point, many people do not perversely leave messages. So, we communicate that yes, we do have phone services. We do afford to serve our patrons regardless of where they live in this county. And please encourage them to leave messages. We will absolutely reach out and, and help overcome that potential challenge.
So, um, I think you could make a motion that we ask the communications department to, um, to put something out. You can define where if you want. If you want it on social media or in a newsletter, they can figure out a way.
I've made three motions. What, uh, your thoughts?
I, I have not made a motion.
No, I mean, you didn't make a motion.
I can't make a motion. I don't.
What you, what you said would make for a very good motion.
Can we answer our phones?
Yeah.
Oh, man.
So, what, what, what would be the most value-add to make a motion to request communication strategies? I don't want to overstep those bounds and presume what their communication strategies are. This is the problem I'm trying to solve. You asked me that.
I, I still don't really see it as a problem yet. I, I just don't, I, I'm having a hard time figuring out like if we're trying to do public communication about changes in hoopla, changes in services, changes, you know, new exciting things happening at the library, ways in which things may be differently located.
Well, I gave them something earlier about if someone calls the main sub-branch and they are not getting an answer and they need an answer. Are the public aware that Are the public aware that they could call the Clever branch or the Ozark branch or the Sparta branch where there may be less traffic, especially Sparta and Clever, uh, that they could call one of the other branches and they're, they're, they would be forwarded to a live person in Ozark or in Nixa as needed. Their, their phone, they can be forwarded.
I mean, I, I think we, yes, we could, I guess we could add that to the-
I would never-
As in, if you need, if you need immediate assistance from a, and can't leave a, a message, that you could try one of our other branches.
I would never have thought to call Ozark to try to reach somebody.
I mean, I think it's gonna be impossible to guarantee that someone is gonna answer every, every time. That's why we have voicemail. I, I just am confused a little bit.
I think it might be valuable messaging. I know our social media team is very creative in their processes, um, and, and does different messaging in a creative way. So I think it might give positive spin to message to our communities that we do want to serve them. We are very excited that we have large programs and large attendance and therefore might have an influx of patrons physically in branches. So please don't abandon if you call, please leave us a message. We look forward to serving you and returning that call. So would the, would that be a motion that you'd like us to direct the team to potentially consider?
Yeah, I think whatever he wants to do, you can just make a motion to that end. So if you'd like the communications team to look at ways to, yeah.
It would be to Tori to direct the communications team.
Yeah.
All right.
So to the executive director.
I would motion for Tori to, uh, please direct the communications team to consider creative messaging, or, um, encouraging patrons to leave messages and that their phone calls will in fact be returned.
Okay, and you would like that presented at the next meeting?
Um, I don't need it presented as much as I think it'd be actionable. So I would be comfortable if you're willing to take that action and then move forward. I don't even know that the board needs to approve it. I think it's just the action that needs taken.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, I think if it's action, you would need a motion.
So my motion is for Tori to please, uh, direct the communications team to promote patrons to leave messages for callback. More specifics on that?
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, do you want options to choose from, like what? Or do you just want us to add something telling message? I just wanna make sure that I'm doing what you asked, basically.
I think I was asking for a communication strategy around this, no issue.
Okay, then just do it, please. Okay?
Any more specifics that you needed?
No.
We're just gonna do what you said.
Appreciate it.
Record the meeting.
Uh, second to that motion? Are you discussing on the motion? All right, seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote. Trustee Gary? Trustee Dana?
Hi.
Trustee Hannah? Motion carries. Thank you in advance to our communications team. We appreciate you. All right, next item of new business this evening is our library promotions strategy. That is a revised new business item for last month's press release process. Tori or Echo, are you just gonna provide today's update?
That's me.
Yes, thank you. Nicholas has prepared something. Thanks for letting us have some time to do that.
Diane, just give it later?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a short 45 minute presentation. All right. So the ask was a literally brief explanation of what we do and then a little bit more information on press release. So that's what we got here. The handout is there, so it's just gonna be a crash course. And what we do, we're gonna start with some just basic definitions. The first definition is promotion. The, it's right there, but it's activities designed to draw attention and stimulate interest. And that's pretty much everything that we do. And we're gonna talk about promotional mix in just a minute on the backside. So public relations is a way to establish and maintain mutual beneficial relationships between organizations and the audience. This is the management of that, those kind of relationships. Advertising is paid promotion through various channels to inform and remind. That's probably what most people think about when it comes to marketing, that it's just the visual part of marketing. The next definitions are specifically about how the library builds relationships with organizations and shares information. The first is the media alert. That's a notification to generate awareness and it's sent to specific media outlets, community partners and/or stakeholders. It's typically presented before then, before the event happens. It varies on when and where when we do that. It's more about like what the event or what the service is. For example, if it's a business resource, sending it to the Chamber of Commerce makes sense. A press release is sent to an established list of press contacts, which includes critical details, statistics and quotes, mostly presented after the event has happened, but not always. This is kinda called the shotgun approach. It can be effective when communicating major change to as many people as possible. And examples of that is when we opened Sparta and Clever when the, when Renee resigned and then when we closed for COVID. Those are big messaging we must have everywhere. But since we're a small community, our press contact list is pretty broad. And it does include media outlets. It also includes key stakeholders such as the Chamber of Commerce, elected officials, schools, stuff like that. A statement is a response.
Can I ask a question later? Um, since during the conference session, um, one of our stakeholders, who also is a media person, um, did not get the release, can other people be added to your list?
Oh yeah, for sure. I, I get into it a little later. We can jump into it now. What would you prefer?
Later, fine. I just know that was a, a concern.
For sure, for sure. And that's part of what, um, Echo was talking about. Okay, so a statement is just a response or declaration from the library. We don't always send them, but it is only sent by the executive director or myself. The examples, which was discussed last month, is when Dana stepped back, that we had two, eventually three requests from the media. And so we sent a press statement after the request was made. We were not planning on sending any statements to the press when Dana stepped back. A media kit is a prepackaged collection of promotional materials, which includes both print and digital. And it's incorporated with media alerts and press releases when needed. An example of this would be any graphs or headshots that, uh, sent out there. It's just to make sure that the correct spelling of whatever staff is there and then anything will help the message, enhance the message. These are all separate functions and they work in harmony. In a large company or organization, there's individual departments for PR, advertising, promotion, stuff like that. But since we're a small library, the communications team only consists of two and a half people. I'm a half person because I supervise two different departments. So I'll spend half my time with communications and the other half with outreach services. And we have to wear lots and lots of hats. Our strategy from a 30-foot view is called a 60/40 approach. And Echo, this will be familiar, cause the MLA presentation that I did a couple of years ago, you heard about this. So the 60/40 approach is an emphasis on building long-term brand building versus short-term marketing. Short-term marketing is designed to generate aware, uh, generate action immediately. So coupons, buy one, get one, stuff like that. That's called short-term marketing. It's effective, but it doesn't build long-term loyalty. That's where long-term brand building comes in. And that's to solidify library awareness and highlighting the mission. Putting, to set aside, putting that you can call back or leave a message for the phone, that's part of long-term brand building. So that'll go right into the, the strategy that we have. To do this, we provide consistent messaging. We establish a, a brand identity. We keep with our colors. We share library stories. We highlight important events. And we also focus on the assets. The biggest asset that we have is staff. So a lot of times we focus on what are the staff doing? Others is the collection and then our facilities and the service that we have. The 60/40 strategy requires lots of planning, probably more than you would think or expect. But we start by yearning things. And that's the skeleton of what we do. Then monthly, we start adding in the muscles. And then, uh, daily, it's only changed when there's an emergency. So something unscheduled or that's urgent, once again, back to the phones. When the phones went out, that was unplanned. And so we had to add that to the schedule. But everything is scheduled out weeks in advance. There is nothing that just crops up. There's examples of how we start that messaging. The promotional mix is to build brand awareness and we do this by a combination of all of it. These are the things that we have. Once again, they're in harmony. I'm not gonna read everything for you, but most, the biggest stuff is like printed email newsletters, which are up there. You guys got one tonight. Monthly emails that are sent both for the events for the month and just news and services for the month. Automated reminders, community calendars, blogs, stuff like that. The last part of the strategy is the measurement. It's the final aspect of the plan. It helps us with new approaches and then identify what we didn't do great, but we can do better. And that's, um, three different ways that we do that. They're all collective. One individual metric isn't enough. You need to can, compare it to all the other stuff. So Savannah, which I'll talk about in October's, that collects for us market penetration, new cardholder retention, active cardholders, gain-loss index, or NBS score and email open rates. The communication-specific stats that we collect, social media engagement and traffic, website visits, print material counts, and then third-party ratings, which is like Google, something like that. And then the library stats is what Tori was talking about just a little bit ago. That's things we require by the state that we also incorporate. Library visits, circulation, event attendance, media room usage, stuff like that. Those also go into the annual reports. I'll talk about press releases now, unless there's a question about any of that stuff.
I have questions, but I'll lean to the end.
Okay. It's almost to the end.
Okay.
As part of the promotional mix, we have, we work with established media organizations. We build friendly relationships and that does include prompt responses, consistent interaction and follow-up so that our messages get passed to the media gatekeepers. Using our definitions, press releases are sent only when there's a major impact on how the library, how the community uses the library. While there is room for interpretation of what qualifies, it is ultimately the discretion of the executive director and, and the committee. The second part of the press release definition is sending the info to the entire contact list. Since we're small, like I said already, it's pretty broad. That's why we don't use it all the time. But it is an important tool. And, um, adding people to the press release, the press contact list just requires somebody emailing. That's all it does. Staff is the same thing that we use for if somebody wanted to be added to the email newsletters. If they don't have a library card already, they just email me. Staff are trained to forward emails, to forward calls, to forward all those requests to me, and we just add it in there. On, uh, there's also a question about standardization. On our website, we have a news dropdown and that's where we put, um, all of those press releases, but they turn them into just a little bit different. So on there, it's, it's news. Some libraries do have a page dedicated to just posting the press releases or media alerts, however they define them, and the format that they're sent to the newspaper. And when they're sent to the newspaper, it's just text, which is, this is what it is. But there's lots of need, a lot of libraries that take the approach that we do, which is take the media alerts and the press releases and the announcements and turn them into blogs and that live on our website in one spot. We find that this complements the original media alert cause on the website, we can add videos, pictures, links to other stuff. That cannot be added to a newspaper story, a radio story, or even a television. So the other concern is about notification. Based on the concern that you have, it seems like that's the process for notifying the board for a press release or media alert. That's something that you would work with the next exec, the executive director with. The, um, that was on Renee and Jared before them to send those off to the board if, if needs, if deemed that they need to. That would come from the executive director. As far as the scheduled promotion, it's, like I said, a well-oiled machine. Media alerts are scheduled months in advance and sent out. They contain a blend of library news, events and services and any kind of updates that we have. And then my last little part that was mentioned last month was about sunshine. So the concern of what constitutes a sunshine request is a conversation that is actually a very recent one. Because the line between a sunshine request and a general question to library staff is not always clear. The role that we use, if the request is sent to me from a media or a patron and it's easily accessible on our website or a library-run social media platform, I go ahead and respond. That's stuff like if they ask for board meetings, I just go straight to the board page, download it and send it out. If the request requires digging beyond what is publicly available, they are forwarded on to because they have records. Okay, that's, answer the questions, but what new questions do you have?
Um, what, what is your email? Are those, are interested in being added? Is your distribution lists?
It's, yeah, you're ready.
All right.
And as in it was, Holliday, spelled H-O-L-L-A-D-Y, at Christian County Library, Javelin.
And his cards are at all the branches of the book desk. So every circulation desk has his cards, my cards, um, and our, you know, our, we don't have phone extensions, but we do have email addresses there. Also, they could probably email communications.
They, that's, that's right on there as well.
Communication, and this will be in the packet too when I post it.
You mentioned the distribution lists. Um, I thought it was, you made the binding line. I said, there's the press release distribution list, there's the media alert distribution list, there's some?
Yeah, there's, the press or the press contact list is just a big list of everybody that's in the community that gets sent. The media alerts are sent to specific ones. When we utilize a press release, we blast everybody. And that literally does include like Chamber of Commerce, schools, the state reps, county commission, like it's everybody.
Yeah.
But media alerts are going to only specific media outlets or specific stakeholders.
Is it because it's so much more targeted?
It's exactly what that is. The shotgun approach is good, but what's better is going to the, to the group that's gonna be seeing it.
Sure, about my, oh, trustees, but I would like to add both of those distribution lists.
Oh, it's just one distribution list?
Uh, one distribution list.
Sure. There are new ones, thank you.
But that's only gonna be for press contacts, like the big ones, which we decided, let's tell J L something. It's not that often, but I do think you wanna talk with the next executive director if you want any type of communication, if you want to help to go on. That's, that's, that's the process.
How often would you say you put those together? How often are you sending out these email blasts, stakeholders in the community?
So every month, there's one to two. And it just, they're all planned out well in advance. Um, if something new comes out, then we'll do it. So one that's not planned, but when Mobius comes back, that's gonna be something. Right? That's gonna be something we're gonna send out and probably expand it to not just a couple, but try to get it broad. Cause the big thing with the community. Um, but yeah, it depends on the month, but typically one to, one to two months in there. It's a combination of events, news, new services. One's going out later this week highlighting the home delivery service that we have. So try to get people to sign up for home delivery.
So Nicholas, that would be the media alert list, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what you asked, right?
And they can be added to that too? Or you're saying?
You, you can, though, yeah, you can.
Yeah, it'd be valuable for us to be aware of anything that we're letting media know.
So with that, whenever we send something to the media alert, it immediately goes into the blog and then it all goes into emails and then we share it on social media. So they're all, you get it every time. What you don't get would be, every once in a while, we don't put something on a blog, but it's, it's a specific reason.
Well, and we have an internal, we probably just add the trustees only account. And we think it would go to that if we send it from it. That way we don't have to have individual, since we changed the people in that, that group. That's really only for within the library, but I think you should be able to send stuff to them.
Sure.
If every, if everybody-
If everybody wants those. So add them to the media alert and the press release list, those two. If that makes sense.
Any questions?
So you're very committed, that's more clear. Thank you.
Sure.
I don't know if your second part, I don't know if it's an excerpt or not, or not.
It does.
Okay, so please.
However, this wasn't a directive, so I can just tell you what I have prepared.
The new business, again, this goes all the way back to the hoopla conversation. If I'm not mistaken, from trustee's hand is to Carl around questions about the library's social media moderation procedures. I see you included that, or how the library is.
So I can just tell you what I have prepared, or I can just answer questions?
I'd be curious if you guys could just present so that he's sure to answer. He puts some information because we knew you wanted to talk about it, but if you can just talk through what your concern was, where it came from, and then that way he knows he's answering or covering that part.
Yeah, so, you know, a couple of months ago, when the change was made to hoopla, they only
It was a month ago.
Yes, a month ago.
It was only a month ago.
It's been a lot longer, but anyway, I did see the notification on the Facebook page of the library. And I noticed that there was, there were a lot of comments.
Yeah.
A lot of.
It was the third most commented post that we've had.
And that's what it seemed like, and I wasn't seeing too much response, like the library were really engaging as much with the outrage. I guess would be the right way to describe how people were feeling. And I was just curious because I noticed that, I went back to the comment, there were 44 comments and there were six replies from the library regarding the comments. And I was wondering, like, how do you select who to reply to? Because then I started poking around on the other posts and I noticed that, you know, there have been a couple of posts that have been made where people will, you know, people will make a comment. Like, for example, there was a post made about the average Asian family and someone made a comment of, oh, and notice he doubled the
Out of county. The comment was, he doubled the out of county.
Yeah, the out of county membership, and I thought, well, that would have been nice for someone to just be like, yes, but look at how much it's been in there. Like, just kind of respond, acknowledge that level of discontent that people were under.
So are you in your name for the job to respond?
No, 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 no. I'm just trying to help.
Yes, so here's, let me tell you what we do.
It was an act of raising the habit.
Let me tell you what we do.
It's a great question, it's a great question.
It's pretty, it's pretty easy. So with social media, we view the comments on social media as an extension of the branch. And so if there's conversations going on, then we get involved when we're asked to be involved. Because otherwise, we would just be hovering over everybody and interducting, adding much, a bunch of stuff. And that's not the point of social media. So I train my staff that if there is a direct question to the library or asking the library to get involved in the conversation, then we will. So that comment, there wasn't a question. It was fact. The out of county card doubled and there wasn't anything else. So if somebody was in the branch and then just stood in the stacks and said, the out of county card doubled. The amount for the out of county card. It may or may not elicit any type of response. So if they asked why, then we would respond because it would be a direct response to us.
That makes sense.
Yeah. The, it's difficult.
It is.
Okay, so I did highlight all of the stuff that our code of conduct follows. It's broad, right? It's very broad. Talking to other libraries and other government entities that have social media, we're being cautioned to be very liberal when it comes to enforcing or having stepping in and interviewing and using those tools that Facebook has such as hiding a comment, deleting a comment, or even engaging in trying to, a lot of misinformation or a lot of comments that aren't, that there are answers to, but we've been canceled to like kind of hold back. Because A, that's not the point of social media, that's for them to engage. And the other point, because it would be selective enforcement of the code. And we would definitely get hit with, you're pulling my comments or you're correcting my comment, but you didn't correct that person's comment. And so the strategy is to just respond to questions.
No, yeah, I mean, it's slippery slope. And where do, and where do you draw the line, right? Like, when do you say enough is enough?
We did, exactly. We did. Draw the line as far as commenting is when they ask us a question or and sometimes it's hard to tell if it's a rhetorical question or if it's like a genuine question. So going back to hoopla, some of the concern was the board was blaming for the hoopla, right? So when there was a question, and there was, there were two. When they asked if the board was responsible, I responded that it's not the board. It was the decision they got at the library. So they went in there and said that. The other components are, social media is an official record as interpreted by the state. And so we cannot just delete stuff because then that would violate the record retention. Additionally, the federal government considers it as open forum, and so it's First Amendment violations if we start deleting stuff. It is tough. Social media is tough.
Is there a policy on when comments are turned on? I don't know. On YouTube, I think our comments always off.
Yeah, so when we didn't have YouTube until COVID, cool for COVID. And when we brought that on, I determined to not have comments on YouTube because we didn't have the bandwidth to monitor yet another social media platform. And so comments are just turned off. Now, does that limit that engagement? It does. There's no question about it.
They're viewing it. That was the point.
The viewing, that's the point, but some libraries will turn off comments for Facebook announcements if they know that it's not going to be positive. I do not, I don't do that because then once again, it's selective enforcement of when we do it and when we don't do it. Other questions about social media monitoring? It's tough.
What is it?
Yeah, but I think the only statistics that I have was over half adults say they get their news from social media. So it is a resource that we can be on because the usage is pretty high. Anything else I can answer about social media or the library's promotion strategy?
Is there a policy that we should wrap all the shape all together and solve the definitions?
And this is, the policy, the social media policy is in the policy manual. So that's, so that one, I guess I can put that in the packet too, but that one's already in there. I just want to thank you guys too for letting us prepare for some of these things and bring it to everybody so rather than, I mean, there are things I don't mind just sharing, but you know, but I really think it's valuable for you guys to be able to talk and ask questions and really get at what you're concerned about and let the public be able to at least listen to that conversation openly too. So thanks for doing that. I appreciate it.
Right, that brings us to the end of our new business agenda and I will call this meeting adjourned.